All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Ted Fousen, is that correct? Is here to give our invocation, if you don't mind, sir. Appreciate you being here.
I'm here on behalf of the citizens. I happen to be pastor of the Blackstone Baptist Church. Don't live here, but I read the paper and I keep up with what you guys are doing. And I appreciate your service. One verse from the book of the Bible which forms the part of my prayer. Let us therefore make every effort to do what leads to peace and to beautiful, mutual edification. Let us pray. In this meeting, Father, bless all those who shall participate. Those who have been elected, those who have responsibility as offices in the county, those who are citizens and care deeply or they wouldn't be here. We ask your help, Father, that each of them shall speak the truth and speak it with the intention that together we may make this a better place to live, a place where people want to stay, a people where, a people who can be extremely proud of their community. We pray for those who have their problems and wonder what to do. And Father, it is my hope they will learn that you are God and are with them and you are here. And if they shall learn to trust you, they shall learn to deal with their problems and quit blaming others. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We really appreciate you being with us tonight and doing that. Now, ladies and gentlemen, if y'all would join us for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank y'all for that. And we need approval of the agenda, but I know we have some amendments to make. One, under unfinished business. It would be under section I, number four, it would be a blight ordinance update. And Mr. Collins is going to lead that discussion. And what else did you have?
Mr. Chairman, we had to get a little more specific on the closed session verbiage. So would the citizens looking under O, just cross that out. Mr. Ingram said he would make that motion, the correct motion.
Okay. Was there anything else, board members? All right, hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second, please? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we do not have any minutes to approve. So we'll move on to this special presentation. And unfortunately, Ms. Brigance was not able to join us tonight. But we're gonna read this resolution of appreciation for her. And then we will have it delivered to her. She's, unfortunately, she's not able to join us tonight. But it's a resolution of appreciation. Whereas Barbara Brigance was appointed to the Social Services Board and-
Chairman, excuse me, I don't think our mics are working. Yours is not, I don't believe.
Hello?
No, it's not.
Okay. Touch this.
Not. Not.
Okay. Pause for one second. For station identification.
Station identification. Tap yours again. I couldn't see it here. I don't hear it now.
The folks out in YouTube land will be able to hear us.
These people can hear us better with it too, I think. All right, let's try it again.
All right. Okay. I hear y'all tapping.
Ooh.
There she goes.
Now we're better.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Oh. It's a little bit feedback. Okay, check, check. All right, is that good?
Yeah.
Is that good? Yeah, I can hear it.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate that. Okay, as I was saying, a resolution of appreciation. Whereas Barbara Brigance was appointed to the Social Services Board in April 2016 and showed unwavering commitment through two terms. Her service ended in March 2024. And whereas she showed dedication, compassion, and always exhibited a willingness to go above and beyond. And whereas Barbara Brigance made invaluable contributions, provided insights, and significantly impacted the success of the Department of Social Services. And whereas her vision and selfless service demonstrated a deep and abiding devotion to the well-being of our community and left an indelible mark on the lives of whom she served. Now therefore be resolved that Nottaway County Board of Supervisors thanks and commends Barbara Brigance for the positive influence she has had on Nottaway County and its Nottaway County Department of Social Services Board. Approved this day, the 18th day of April 2024. And I'd like to give her a round of applause. She is a wonderful lady and thank her for what she's done. And we will see to it that this is delivered to her. And I had to speak with her yesterday. She's in good spirits and very appreciative of the resolution from the board. So thank y'all for that as well. Delegations from the public, the sheet. Yeah, thanks. All right, thank you. Class C Moore set.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Found this newspaper article says youth pleads guilty to six arson counts. Now, recently I had Mr. Ruark stand up and say, bring it on. So I figured I'd oblige him on that. So I go back here, I thought he was tried as a juvenile. He wasn't. So that's open records. He was tried in the circuit court as an adult. That says if you plead guilty to six counts of arson, 17 years old. But at the time of sentencing, he was 18 years old. He was right at 18 years old when did six counts of arson felony, class four felonies, state of Virginia. Now, Mr. Ruark received 40 years, sentenced to 40 years in prison. And it was suspended except for one year. So he had to go to one year to prison. I have also been extensive investigation. And I won't be bringing it all up tonight. But I don't wanna know how anybody can run for office twice and it never be brought to the citizens' attention that he was sentenced to 40 years in prison. How could that happen? How could his civil rights be restored? But he got them restored, 2013, June, uh, June the 21st, 2013. He got his civil rights restored. But I'm just wondering if the people of this county had any idea what they were elected. And you wanna see something? Get his driving record. Get it. I ain't kidding you. I've been driving 25 years longer than him. And I have got, I think, one charge. It would take you five minutes to read all the charges. He has a total disrespect for Virginia law. There he sits. Bring it on, slugger. Now, this is the tip of the iceberg. I got a whole lot of more stuff coming involving Mr. Bowen, Mr. Ruark up there, and you're gonna be shocked at that, just the same as you are at this, if you're shocked. I read it to one person that know and they were shocked, that didn't know it and was shocked. That's of significance to this board. So I just wanna know how this can happen, how this man can set up here. At six times the fire trucks in this county had to go out, risk their lives putting a fire. The charges was the buildings were unoccupied. The sheriff missed that. Because the testimony said they went in the building. How can you go in the building and start a fire and it not be occupied? I don't know unless he was a ghost. I don't understand that. So anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention. But there's a whole lot more going on here. How could you take a man that has illegally been on the board for 15 and a half years and grant him an award? When he was committing a felony the whole time he was on it? How can you give him award? And then the county, the state coalition of counties or whatever you call it, Mr. Dean Lynch gets up here and talks about, man, this man has been a great job as a board. The man was never legally a board member. Never legally on the board. So tell me how this can go on in a society of people that are supposed to have their right minds? How could this happen? This shows a sheer neglect for intelligence. That's all I gotta say. But I will be bringing it on. This is only part of it.
Well, I'm glad you have because you just sat here and said it's sheer intelligence for anybody from outside of this county to insult these- You are out of order, sir!
You are out of order, sir.
If you do not stop speaking, we're gonna have you removed.
Let's carry to court and find out. I'm ready to go with you. I'm getting ready in a suit over your loaf right now.
I actually brought a pencil so I could write down all the notes you were gonna tell us tonight.
One word that I said was not true.
I just made sure I brought a pencil so you could write, I could write down all the points that you would make. Ma'am, you are out of order as well. Thank you. The citizens will be pleased. Anybody else have anything?
I got a whole lot, but I'm not gonna say nothing.
Mr. Ruark, Chairman, I believe you had your civil rights restored. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does that allow you to run for office in the state of Virginia?
Yes, sir.
How many times you been elected?
Twice.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruark takes five minutes to read your driving record. Takes about two days reading mine. Cast the first stone who hath not sinned.
Thank you, Father.
I've got the Bible verse, "He who is without sin casts the first stone."
That's exactly right. And sometimes you gotta live on both sides to understand it. Don't worry about that at all.
Gentlemen, I know we have the right to freedom of speech. Everyone here does. But the right to freedom of speech doesn't give you the right to desecrate people and their character. We all did stupid stuff when we were young. We move forward and we move on. This serves no merit to this board tonight. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, thank y'all and I appreciate that. And that's the reason why I decided to run because Nottaway County is number one. The people from Nottaway County are very loving, they're very forgiving, and they're very trusting. What you saw tonight was I come here and someone from outside of the county. That's why they act like they do, including one from California who wants to bring that nonsense to Virginia. Anyhow, moving on. Mr. Glenn War.
Mr. War, this is not related. Your topic's next.
Okay.
Your chair.
Yeah, he's got that.
All right. Chris Karen? Okay, all right. All right, we'll get to y'all there. Mr. Hawthorne.
The attorneys always get to go first, don't they? They should. They get paid the most.
Well, that was a great way to start the meeting. But it just, and Slugger is a friend of mine.
As he is mine.
Even those that come from elsewhere, they can be good folks too, definitely. It just reminds me of what my uncle used to tell me all the time is that, you know, regardless of our past, regardless of mistakes we made, he was always comfortable that everybody did the best they could under the circumstances they were in at the time. And that applies to Nottaway County in 1860, Nottaway County in 1900, 1950, whatever year Steve was elected, and today. I know we can all, we all do the best we can. We don't always agree. But we get along. And it allows somebody like Dicky and me to share a moment looking at a once-in-a-lifetime solar eclipse. He let me have his glasses. We looked at it together. Now that was me. I'll always remember that. We don't wanna always, we're not gonna see eye to eye and other stuff.
We could see the sun together. Pieces of it, anyway.
The absence of the sun together, that's right. We could both be in the dark together. But anyway, it's, I like the last board. I like this board. I'm really, really proud of y'all. Y'all do a thankless task. And people like Slugger serve a purpose too. People like Sue serve a purpose too. Keeps us on our toes. But I think most of the people here will say that y'all are doing a job that most of us wouldn't do. And we appreciate it. Now, that being said, real quick, I won't take up too much of your time. The ordinance that was passed by the planning commission here on Tuesday, just wanted to make a couple of observations and then I'll jump everything else I was gonna say. I'm assuming that's not up for vote tonight. I didn't see it on the agenda at least. Am I right on that?
You're correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so just wanted to point out if the, if the boards will do whatever it thinks is best and that's wonderful and we'll keep on trying. But if the goal, if the goal here was to just allow small solar projects, I think we're unfortunately way off base. I did some calculations with our proposed setback requirements. I did the calculations on a 200-acre piece of land. And I'll try to make this brief, I know it's on top. But the, you know, the way to maximize a land's, the area of any kind of shape is a circle, right? So a 200-acre circle will give you the most area, most perimeter area to work with. And with a, if you take a 200-acre piece of land, it's a circle. And very few of us own more than 200 acres. Very few small landowners will be able to do a solar project working with something more than 200 acres, right? Because then they'd be a large landowner. So a small landowner, let's just say they're fortunate enough to have 200 acres. You take a circle and you apply those setbacks that's in your proposed ordinance. And you're gonna take 200 acres and it's gonna reduce down the availability of area to work with to 54 acres. Now, you've got, that's assuming two dimensionally, a perfectly flat area where you can build on every acre. And that's not realistic because you can't put 40 acres of solar panels and a fence and all the accoutrements that go with it in 54 acres. Because of the topography, the slopes, you're gonna have some wetlands or some streams, something like that. So let's just take a square then. You know, more property is shaped like a square. If you do that, you apply your setbacks to that, you're only gonna have like 42 acres of value. Of course, you can't do a 40-acre solar project in 42 acres. So that's not gonna happen. And then if you do a rectangle that is, you know, one side's half the size of that square I just referenced, now you're down to 28 acres. If you have an equal lateral triangle, you know, three equal sides, the buffers would basically wipe out any area. So there's really no piece of land that will suffice for that size project. Now, could you do a tiny one megawatt project? Sure. But the county's not gonna get revenue from that. You're not gonna get a site in agreement. You're not gonna get anything appreciable from that. So I just wanted to point out that the ordinance pretty much will ironically have the effect of ruling out any smaller landowners, which most of us are. And then large landowners aren't going to take 500, 800 acres and put a little 40-acre project in the middle of it. That's just, it's not gonna be compatible with the use of the rest of the land. So, and that, and then I noticed one other thing that I want you all to consider is there's no wiggle room language for you all to change or massage the rules. If you do have a project that does make you happy or you think is viable for the county, there's no language that most ordinances would otherwise have that allow the county to change or vary from the requirements of the ordinance. So just two things I wanted to put in your heads to consider. I'm not gonna talk about all the revenue or all that. I'm sure some of the other people may. But I just wanna close by saying y'all do, you do a great job. I'm proud to consider all of you my friends and thank y'all for the time that y'all devoted to talking to me and others about this issue and all the others that affect the county.
Thank you, Ms. Hawthorne. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify my response to Mr. Hawthorne about not being on the agenda. I think it was you and this board don't wanna just rubber stamp this thing from the planning commission. We wanna hear people's opinion, even though this might be the planning commission recommendation. So we will have it up very soon. Is that right, Mr. Zodi, to, for your consideration? But just remember, the planning commission recommends, but the board actually has to vote on the final zoning ordinance, okay?
Okay. Mr. Dennis Tatum.
I like what Robert Hawthorne had to say.
Yes, sir.
You had a good point. I got a piece of property that went for so long. I would love for y'all to come here and visit it. I think it's an opportunity for Nottaway County to come look at it. Spend a few minutes. It can be good for the county, the people, the people in the county hired y'all to help them. And I think we need to really look at this piece of property. Y'all welcome to come. I wanna help the county. I don't wanna hurt it. If you don't like my property, you don't hurt my feelings. But I'm here to try to help the county. And the county needs money. If it makes sense, let's do it. We don't need 40, or 10, 40 projects. If we can put one, and I ain't saying just mine, anybody's, that can come in one place. Because these people putting their soul in it, they gotta get to their source and it costs them a lot of money.
Right.
And they can't just scatter out everywhere. And we lose it on this opportunity. Nottaway is gonna be hurting for the revenue they can make for this county.
Yes, sir.
But I'm welcome, y'all welcome to come. Anytime and thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. And board members, some of y'all know that Mr. Tatum had, just like he extended it tonight, he had also extended it to me in a public conversation. And I rode out to his property and looked. And as we move forward, I just feel like we owe our eyes on certain things, whether it's through at least the GIS, I believe, Mr. Collins, and has looked through the property as well as on the GIS location and stuff like that. So I don't want anybody to feel like we're ignoring them. But, you know, the people have spoken loudly about this as well. But still, at the end of the day, I think we owe it to the citizens to, you know, at least have conversations with them, even if it's a door that we have to close.
I'm familiar with that property and I know Lazaretta Creek runs right through the middle of it. And Lazaretta Creek goes to crew water supply. So think about that when you go look at it.
Mr. Tatum, Mr. Chairman, can I do something? Mr. Tatum, you are in my district, so I will owe you the courtesy. I feel like I owe you the courtesy. I'll get with you and I'll visit. I have been out to his property. It's right across from my uncle's property.
I know it's pretty, but most things that I do to property, it's a big pond there. It's mostly spring dead. It's not like that.
We'll talk about that when I come out, but I'll make an appointment with you and come out there and look at it.
All right, and board members, did y'all have anything on the delegations from the public? I just wanted to say one other thing. When you're, when you're young, you can make mistakes. And I did. And everybody around here knows. Just about everybody around here knows. Of course, there's people that's moved here since that happened. But I made an awful mistake. But like my old address, I don't live there no more. So to anybody that wants, feel free to come to this mic and keep kicking me in the teeth. Okay. But watch what we, as a board and a county, do. We're not gonna sit still and think about something that happened 33 years ago, folks. 33 years ago, I made an awful, awful mistake. And there's firefighters sitting in here tonight that answered that call. And I'll never forget that. I had family members that answered that call. And I'll never forget that. It's one of the reasons why I worked so hard to serve the citizens of this county. I've apologized then, and I'll always own it. And I'll always feel like I owe a debt to this county because of the mistake I made. But again, like my old address, I don't live there anymore. Thank y'all.
Thank you, John.
Moving on to public here, Cherry Tree Timber.
Good evening, supervisors. This item has been a longstanding issue in the county, at least my tenure, two years. But that was one of the first things that the previous, one of the previous administrators handed to me. And I went out there in March of 2022 to look at the site. And there's seven, eight campers there. I believe there's one RV there. And there've been a lot of complaints from one individual who wished to remain anonymous.
That person continued to remain anonymous?
Yes.
I don't think it, mic's working.
For the most part. Yes, sir. But what I suggested, my, a lot of times as zoning administrator, what I do, I try to work with the person. And is there a way we can do, they can continue to do what they're doing? within the parameters of our zoning ordinance? I think we have to reflect a good business image that we are open. There are limitations. But I worked with Mr. Worrell and we have had, I think, very productive conversations about this particular site. This particular site is located on Lewiston Plank Road. It has approximately 2,300 acres zoned agriculture. And the site, the complainant referenced the seven or eight campers that are adjacent to Lewiston Plank Road. And there's never a special exception for hunt club, which is part of it, and a campground. Those are what we're asking for tonight, what Mr. Worrell is asking for tonight. Excuse me, so we worked and we finally found Cherry Tree Timber's address, it's in London. I believe I mentioned that to the Planning Commission. We heard, we held the first public hearing on January 16th, 2024. And the Planning Commission continued it until March because in February 20th of 2024, we held our joint public hearing for solar. So I don't think it'd be good to have those two items on the same agenda. So we continued it until the March 19th meeting. At that meeting, we basically had discussion, I was given instructions by the Planning Commission at the January meeting, really four things. Can the campers and RVs be taxed? And I spoke with Ms. Hudson, a commissioner of revenue, and she said, they are here year round. They should be taxed, personal property tax. And whether or not the existing entrance on Lewiston Plank Road is adequate for low volume commercial entrance. I've asked VDOT and I have not heard back from Mr. Henson. There's no slight against Mr. Henson, I think he's waiting to see, you know, if this passes before going out there and getting his eyes on the entrance. The existing entrance is a good distance from the crest of the hill going south. And in my opinion, I'm not an engineer, but I would say that that's adequate site distance. But I'll leave that to the professionals. And third, will the property owner install a septic system? Mrs. Hawley recommended that there needs to be a permanent solution. But as we discussed, I think in some detail at our Planning Commission meeting, there's examples because she didn't want pump and haul being a permanent fix. But several of the planning commissioners did point out instances where there are more likely pump, porta-johns located throughout the county, at stadiums or whatever, ballfields, what have you. They pump and haul all the time. So it is permanent to an extent and I kind of lean that way myself. Lastly, the dog kennel status. The kennels have been, if I, please correct me if I'm wrong, the kennels have been removed from the site. So after much deliberation, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this with the conditions contained in this packet. And I would kindly ask that the board consider adopting the taxation issue as a condition.
Okay. Board members, y'all have any questions at this point?
How far off of the, how close are these campers located to the adjacent land? I know it's a large tract of land, about 2,300 acres, but is this on a narrow strip? That it's only a couple hundred foot from somebody else's property?
About a half mile, I believe.
I looked at the maps and I couldn't really tell.
Yeah, it's a good site, a good distance away. And I'd rely on it.
Half mile off the.
It comes right off the Harshuggers Road, but the nearest neighbor.
It's a half mile, but it comes, right. Have you been out there? Anybody, any of us been out there?
Oh, I've been out there.
You have been out there?
Up the road from me.
Okay.
So I know, I'm familiar with it.
Was the dog kennels being removed a county require?
I understand it was, the dog kennels are being removed. The only thing we really have there now is the catch pins. And that's normally just used during hunting season.
Was the dog pins requested to be removed by someone?
They were, all of the dog pins on the property were licensed. The same individual that was complaining about the properties was also complaining about the dog pins. So the man that had his dogs out there went down and legally got them licensed through the county.
He got kennel permit then, kennel tag?
Yes, he's got kennel permit down there and yes, he's in the process of moving back to where he is now.
How often does somebody occupy the camper?
Nobody, when the dogs were down there, somebody was down there a couple times a week, turned around and make sure everything was going through. And then you had other people in the club checking all things. And then now, since all the dogs are pretty much out of there now, you don't have anybody staying down there.
Except during hunting season, more or less.
Except during hunting season, like right now, turkey season just came in, so the guys are down there on the weekends a week. And if anybody's down there, they do check and make sure everything's taken care of with dogs and everything on the property is maintenance and taken care of.
Alright, if we can hold up for one second, and the reason I'm doing, because the probably the plan will be speaking during the public hearing, so we can get to the mic.
Yeah, I figured that's why they're.
So the citizens can hear it, so the citizens can hear them when they speak.
And Mr. Chairman and the board, I would like to point out that I did receive two calls, I believe it was earlier this week, from nearby property owners. One was Mr. Hamilton and then Mr. Mason, he's here tonight as well. And they're inquiring, Mr. Mason is inquiring about the location, if that is going to be a fixed point. And they do have a recreational lease, I believe it might be described in that lease, that they stay within those parameters.
Okay.
Secondly, Mr. Hamilton was concerned about the power source. And they've had generators there, when I visited the site and I've visited there several times. And there's been no mention of running power to the site. Because that's Mr. Hamilton's concern. So that's all I have for you.
Okay. Alright, well, board members, I need a motion to open the public hearing for Cherry Tree Timber, who is seeking to establish a conforming hunting lodge and game preserve and campground by a club located on Lewiston Plank Road.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? The public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to speak for or against? And if you would, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Worrell. I work with F&amp;W Forestry Services out of Charlottesville. I'm here representing Cherry Tree Timber, the owner of the property here in Nottaway County. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you a little bit this evening about what we're asking for. I think Greg detailed it, it's detailed fairly well, what he's gone through over the last couple of years trying to get in touch with us. F&amp;W Forestry took over the management of this property in '22, which was right about the same time Greg started looking into this. And he's been really helpful, helping us to get through this. Essentially, what we're asking for is the opportunity to allow our hunt club members to have a campsite on the property. Now, it's not a traditional campsite, first of all, there will be no power. We're not wanting to put power on the site. We are not, Cherry Tree does really, does not want to install any type of a permanent septic system. That's not the use of the property, this is a forested property. The property in question is 2,300 acres, well, 2,350 acres to be exact. And it's been forest land for many years. And it's been leased for hunting for many years. The current hunt club has been there for, well, I know for the last two years, but some of the members have hunted on it 20, 30 years. So this has been a hunting property that's been used for timberland production and recreational use, primarily the recreational use being hunting. And so what we're just asking for there is the permit, when we were first contacted by Mr. Zodi and got to talk, and this is the, been managing property in Virginia for 30 years. This is the first time we've had any type of an issue come up like this anywhere we work across Virginia. It's fairly common during hunting season for hunters to bring campers on the property for a short term spell. One of the things that does make this unique is several of the campers are there for year round. And so we've been willing to work with Greg and really, what does the county require of us? Primarily, it's not us, it's what are they going to require the hunt club to do that? And as we stated to Greg very early on, we could have easily made a decision as the landowner and said, okay, we're not in compliance, move them. We've got to remove them off the property. If we have, you know, if we have to do that, we're willing to do that. We're not, that's not a hill we're wanting to die on. But at the same time, we recognize this is an issue there are many properties throughout Virginia during hunting season. There's going to be hunting, there are going to be campers there. There are going to be campers there for a period of time. Again, what makes this one unique is some of these campers are there full time. One of the things that is impressive to me, again, I've been doing this for a while, this site does have porta-potties on it. They pump those porta-potties several times of the year during hunting season when there's active activity there. They also, all of these RV campers have black and gray tanks. So it's not like any of the sewage system is being dumped onto the property. And one of the interesting things I heard during the second Planning Commission meeting was, it was essentially, when you're building a house, it takes three to four months to build a house. And they got to have a porta-potty on site. So they don't require them to have a permanent septic system during the building of a house. Now, obviously, a house, because that's different, they have to have it. And that's essentially what, one way to look at it here. And I had not thought about that, but I can't remember the Planning Commission gentleman that brought that analogy up. But it's really, the hunters are there, hunting season, deer season comes in in October, bow season, there's probably not a lot of campers there or a lot of people camping then. Primary hunting season begins around the first of November with black powder. It goes typically to the first weekend in January. So that's when the heavy activity of camping is on the property. And then as was mentioned here, we're now in the midst of spring turkey season. So I'm sure there's probably some people that come out there and they'll come in at night and get up. You know, turkey season, you got to get up before they do, so you can, so you can have a good chance to hunt them. So that's really what we're asking for. We're just wanting to have an opportunity to continue to lease the property, to give this club the opportunity to use it as a recreational property for hunting lease. And then part of that is they're using the campers on the site. I really don't want to take up any more of your time. It's been interesting for the meeting. I appreciate what you all have to do and the decisions. And, you know, they say confession is good for the soul, but repentance is even better. And, but I will make a confession, I don't live here in Nottaway. I've worked in Nottaway County for a number of years. I've been going through Nottaway for a number of years. And if somebody was to pull my driving record, my first speeding ticket would be from Nottaway County.
Imagine that.
But there's not been another one. I did learn, thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Y'all have any question, board members?
Appreciate you leasing ground and hunting.
Thank you, sir. Alright, anybody else to speak for or against? Come forward, sir, please, thank you.
How are y'all tonight?
Good, good.
Basically, I guess I'm to say, I'm the VP of the Hunt Club that everybody's talking about right now. And a lot of the guys, including Bruce back here, he's one of the original members. He's been hunting with the club up there for close to 20 years. We started out, the guys would stay in hotels. And then they went to turn around, leasing a piece of property to turn around and stay in just during the time they were hunting. And then all that was going down. So the original company, that the tree company that was there, turned around and cut us a deal and they let them turn around and take the one acre where all these campers are now and put campers on them. And we paid this company every season per camper that sat on the property. And then when all this came up of the point where, oh, it's not zoned for this, that and the other, nobody understood because we'd been paying all these years to have the campers on the property. But we do turn around and I have the receipts here, we've had the porta-johns and all pumped. They got pumped this year five different times, they charged us for four times. The company is stiff out of our prospect. And we try to make it so that everything is straight up and legit when we're there. And I mean, a lot of us bring family members in, we spend time with them, we drive a long distance to get here. I'm not from Nottaway. I'm actually from Richmond. And like tonight, I drove an hour and 30 minutes to get here from work so that I can make sure I was here to speak, to turn around and let everybody know what was going on with the hunt club. But basically, the campers are mainly just used during deer season. Occasionally, they're used during turkey season and different things like that. We have work weekends where we come up and do cleanup work and around the area do food plots, that kind of thing. And the guys will stay that way because it is an over an hour drive for a majority of the guys in the club. And it's kind of hard to make, wake up at 3:00 in the morning and drive down here to get down here at 5:00 and turn around and do a successful hunt. And then you hunt all day, catch dogs and you want to have to drive home at nighttime. I mean, that's a long drive. That's the reason there's catch pins there. And one of the club members there was having a hard issue with the divorce going on and all. That's the reason the dog pin actually got put on the property. Because him and his wife were going through a divorce and he needed a place to keep his dogs. So during that time, he had his dogs there and he got them licensed and everything was legalized. And now he's in the process, he's gone through his divorce, he's got him another house, he's getting his dogs out of there. So the only thing we'll have left on the property is catch pins. So, I mean, that's basically everything that goes on. I mean, we've had issues with, I showed Mr. Collins the Virginia Gaming and Alien Fisheries Department. Mr. Ingram, you have property that backs up the irons down off of our research road area and all that backs up to a man's name, I won't mention his name, but I have in a report where he did shoot at some of our guys in the woods this year. And that's because our property line and his, and when somebody gets too close to his property line or our dogs go on his property, he doesn't like it. I mean, the same man also held two of my kids at gunpoint two years ago. But to turn around and keep everything calm with Mr. Davis, we turn around and we don't say anything. But this year, when the gunshots rang through the woods, down through the area where the guys were at, they had another young guy there and he was kind of scared for everything that went on. So he turned around and made a report. And I have a report, I can give you all, each of you a copy of if you like, where the game warden came in, brought the dog in, found the bullet shells in the middle of the road and so forth and so on. But I know it's all about the campers now. And we're just here to try to respect y'all's thing. We've offered now to, we'll pay personal property taxes on all the campers on the property that stay there year round. As I said, we're doing the pumping of the porta-johns. So we'll even tag and license everything if that's what y'all would like, to make it so that Nottaway County can get the revenue off of us having the campers up there that sit there year round. We have a few people that bring them in for hunting season and then they tow them back out. But like I said, some of them have been there for a long time. I'm a corporate, mine's been there for eight years. But it's set up as a bunkhouse for me and my family. I have five kids that hunt and my brother's just started bringing his other two kids up there. So we have a big bunkhouse for all them to turn around and come in. But we do make it so that there are facilities there for everybody to take care of their business so that they're not doing it in the woods and trashing everything.
Okay. Alright, board members, y'all have any questions?
Thank you for speaking, thanks for coming tonight.
Y'all eat in Nottaway County, don't you?
Excuse me?
When y'all come up here and hunt, y'all eat in the county, spend money in the county.
I will tell you, the Italian restaurant and the Mexican restaurant gives a whole lot of business along with the dollar score.
I know they, and we do appreciate that.
So, yes, sir, we do try to take care of the county when we're here, so, thank y'all.
We appreciate you, thank you. Alright, citizens, members, is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against? Mr. Mason?
Good evening, members.
Good evening.
First of all, absolutely no opposition whatsoever to the hunt club partaking in the way they are, you know, and carrying on the way they are. I just wanted to elaborate a bit on what Mr. Zodi said. It would seem to me that it would be appropriate for the special exception to read just as their agreement with Cherry Tree reads in that they are confined to that acre or five acres or 10 acres or whatever it is that they can have the campers, as opposed to the way the special exception reads. It would look to me as though they could just pepper that 2,300 acre piece with a camper here, a camper there.
Where the campers are a separate parcel?
Sorry?
No, it's not.
Where the campers are, is that a separate parcel?
No, it's not.
And then the second point that I wanted to make was on behalf of Mr. Hamilton, who's not here this evening. He has legacy forests all over his property. And he's just concerned that if there ever did come a time that they needed electricity, you know, as they grow or have more campers, that they pursue an electrical hookup at the residence that's up 723 as opposed to crossing 723 and going through his property and therefore perhaps having to timber some of his.
He would have to sign for that, agree to that.
Yeah.
He'd have to agree to that.
So those were my only two points and what Greg had touched on there. But absolutely no opposition otherwise.
Alright.
Thanks.
And Mr. Mason isn't a joint in land owner, so.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Mason? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mason. Now, board members, to his point, do y'all have any, do y'all have any concerns about that? Do you want to have it?
I think you got another gentleman wants to speak on it.
Okay.
I think.
Anybody want to speak for or against?
Maybe not.
Okay. Alright, I need a motion to close the public hearing then?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is cleared. And the board members, if y'all have any other discussion or if anybody wishes to place a motion on the floor for discussion or anything, that's where we're at this point. this point. So, I mean, just, I, I understand what Mr. Mason is saying. Had, was that, has that been a conversation that y'all have considered at all, is restricting this from expanding throughout the 2,300 acres or is...
Honestly, no, sir. Um, I've just been told that was the fixed site, uh, according to the recreational lease they signed with the, um, campers, with the hunters.
I would like to say this, I can understand his concern, but I'm just thinking about a parcel, a parcel of property that I own. If I own that property and I wish to set a camper that's not permanent anywhere on that property, I should have the right to do that.
Ah, man.
Um, I'm, I don't wanna see no sprinkled round, if it's not a permanent structure. If I, if I, if I'm in a rural area and I got, and I got, and I wanna leave a camper overnight there, if you can't do it, it's somewhat communist, I would say, because I don't own the land at that point.
Well, I'm fixing the zoning order to, to allow something like that because technically...
So right now, you're saying that on my property, I can't bring a camper overnight and park it in corner of my field?
That's how I could, that's how it could be interpreted. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I definitely think that needs to be fixed.
Right. And just, just for the record, Supervisor Toth, I would like that, to be noted that I did disagree with you on one thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's the first. Remember that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And I'm in full support of hunting clubs in the area. I've, I've been a part, I don't hunt myself. I don't have time to hunt. But I got two boys that love hunting and I support them hunting 100%. They, they're young boys and, and I rent a large parcel of property over Lunenburg County. It's actually got a hunting club on it that does not have a restroom in it, but does have electricity and does have water. And those guys doing exceptional well taking care of the land and putting game plots in and, uh, and it really helps the Land O' Lakes pay the taxes because these guys have to pay big money to hunt this land.
Oh, yeah.
It ain't like they doing it for free. Now, if he's got barking dogs and I live across the street, I'd have something to say about it, but I don't know as much I can do about it.
Well, I, I would say this too. There are really two parcels in that 24, 2,500 acres.
Two different, two separate parcels?
Well, it's not separate, but these guys, I think, hunt on the right-hand side of Lewiston Plank and below Old Schoolhouse Road, correct?
Yes, sir.
Then there's another hunt club that, that hunts down West Courthouse Road, down to Old Schoolhouse Road. So there's, there are two different hunt clubs that, that hunt on that property. The others, the other hunt club is pretty much local guys, okay? Live up the road from me. So, you know, I, I...
They got the other, they actually have the portion next to you.
Right.
And the 500 acres is right there that goes from Lewiston Plank over to Rubbermont.
Right, that's correct.
500 acres right there.
Yeah.
Is just a piece inside of ours.
Yeah.
And then Little Notaway hunts the property on the left-hand side of the road we're riding there.
That's correct.
Most, most guys that hunt are really good fellows. There's a few jerks when it comes time, well, it's a few jerks and board members too. But, but there's a few jerks in every group of people and, and I'm, it's hard to hear that that man, that's got a disagreement behind y'all. I'd like to see that resolved.
We have had an issue with him ever since he moved in. He's put concrete barricades up on the sides of the road.
Y'all should carry him a fruitcake for Christmas.
Man, I've given him a van deer meat, I've given him a bottle of liquor.
Well, you can't, you can't please everyone.
And then he still, as soon as hunting season comes around, he just sits, literally will, he'll hear us getting ready to run dogs, he will pull his truck out onto the gravel road and pull over and park and sit there with his little itty-bitty P5 and sit on the side of the road to warn that all the hunters.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Tell us if our dogs go over on his property, he's gonna shoot them and things of that nature. And I mean, we try to just...
Mr. Ingram, have you had any trouble with them? With the hunt, uh, truthfully, I asked a truthfully...
I'm not at liberty to say.
I, I, I'd like to see them stay there and be able to do what they're doing and do it in a best management practice that's available.
We use one acre of land over there where we're at and the agreement was we could move off that one acre of land that we have where our campers are.
That's in your, your lease agreement?
It was in the original lease agreement. I'm not sure if it's in the one with Cherry Tree or not, but I know that the original one we had with the other, uh, company was, we had the one acre right there.
Okay.
And the entrance to that one acre, I heard y'all talking about that earlier, they were talking about the VDOT situation. You come over the rest of the hill and you literally go 152, 100 yards before you get to the intersection. And then to turn and go down an old schoolhouse road is another 50, 50 feet past where our entrance is.
Yes.
So it's not like it's an issue where our entrance is to campground, but it's a flat lot, open area, no hills or anything else to get in.
How many members y'all have in that hunting club?
As of right now, we have 45.
Ooh, big hunting club.
And 45 members is counting, uh, the dog hunters and all that turn around and come in. Between me and my brother and my son, I think we bring in close to 30 to 40 dogs. And then we turn around and have other guys, uh, that also hunt the property, bring in bird dogs and different things of that nature.
Okay. All right. Well, we...
Chairman, can I weigh in on this? Y'all look at me and say, what does she know? My daddy didn't have boys. He had two girls and he taught us to shoot and I probably can shoot better than any of these boys up here. And I, I appreciate you being good neighbors. It seems like y'all have been there. Longevity shows you're good neighbors. The citizens don't oppose it except for one. And so I, I don't see any reason we can't move forward and pass this for approval.
Yeah. Well, I would say this, I, I just feel like, I don't think you have to worry about anybody wearing a tuxedo asking for Dr. Pepper and smoking meth down there at this camp.
It's probably, yeah, because there's shooting going on. It's probably shooting going on. They might say they don't like them guns.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, where would I find the language to make the motion?
Um, it would just, uh...
Come from the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes. Do you, do you have that?
Your conditions?
No, just the language. Do you want the motion made yet?
The language for the motion?
Oh, just that the board supervisors approve, um, the request for the Hunt Club and Camp Club, uh, with the following conditions.
With the stated, uh, conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, is that clear that Mr. Mason had brought up or not?
Fixed location is the one acre, be the one acre lease area. That, I, I think the best way to say it where it's currently located.
No need to say that in the motion?
Yes.
It is, you should say it.
I, I, yes, sir. I should've said that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do you have that, Mr. Collins?
See here.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept a special exception permit, applicant Cherry Tree Timber LLC to establish a hunting lodge, game preserving campground by a club with the requirements from planning in regards to pumping sewage. And then it stay in the existing footprint.
And licensing of the...
Along with personal property tax being paid by the owners of the trip.
Okay. Y'all have heard the motion. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Got that taken care of. All right. Moving on. Um, VDOT?
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Rourke, members of the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Bowen.
Hey, good evening.
Um, as y'all recall, last month, um, when I was here, I told you that the 723, 460 R-cut would only have detours over the weekend. Well, the very next day, we had a project meeting and it was determined that we would have to do a little bit more than that. So I did ask that they would come and show a presentation and, and show you all why we need to do that. So I have here, um, Tom Kendrick. He's the actual project manager for the project. And Joe Fessick, he's the assistant location and design engineer from the Richmond District.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
As Diana said, my name is Tom Kendrick. I'm project manager for the R-cut project on Route 460. I really have limited information to provide tonight. Uh, I will say the project is one year ahead of schedule as far as our scoped schedule and we are on budget. And, uh, like I said, we, we're here really tonight to talk about the, the revision to the MOT. And, uh, Mr. Joe Fessick, he's our subject matter expert, assistant L and D engineer. And he's, uh, he's gonna go ahead and describe, um, this is a, a graphic, a, basically it's a animated, uh, that'll show the movement of the vehicles through the, uh, through the new intersection.
We love animation here.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, as Tom said, Diana had requested this, uh, animation from us previously to provide to you. So you should've seen this before, but we brought it tonight first to illustrate, uh, kind of why we need this additional, uh, partial detour to construct this. Uh, what you see there is the designed vehicle, which is our, our WB62 truck. You can see how it off tracks onto that concrete apron as it goes around the turn. Um, the next motion you'll see after this will be where we need it, primarily in the inters- in the intersection. Um, you see with the mouse right here, to build this apron, and you'll see the animation will run it. The trucks will actually, that are coming on westbound 460, making the left turn in, down 723 down Lewiston Plank Road, they need to traverse over that truck apron. So, um, as, as Diana said, we had our final meeting on the project. Um, the majority of the work will be done on the detours that were previously described. And I have a, I have a sequence of construction that I'm gonna share with you after the animation runs. But, um, in the interest of safety and not, no, no driver confusion, when we close that median to build this side of the intersection, uh, we'd like to just keep it closed while that concrete is curing, typically 28 days to allow, because the trucks need to traverse over it, which could, um, impact the formwork and, and it's curing itself. We do this typically when we do roundabouts, it's a very similar type of thing. We'll have some kind of detour or something while we cure the truck apron. We don't wanna use a high early strength concrete here or something that would allow us to open traffic because it's gonna have durability issues, which is gonna cause maintenance issues. And as, and as the trucks are driving over it, we don't want it crumbling and causing, you know, debris in the road. Um, these are the detour plans. These are the same that were, um, shared with you previously whenever Diana coordinated the detour originally. And if you could go back to the animation, Tom, for a second, please. We don't need to keep the entire detours in place. The, the, some of the phases of the detour are to build a widening to, to, in the first phase, and I'll show you that in the sequence in just a second. But it's, it's primarily just closing the median in this corner. And once we close it, we wanna leave it closed until we can open it. So the, the only motions that will be restricted are going to be your left turn coming down here and your 723 straight through movement. And the, it'll be the same detours that are in place for the weekend construction. So once they're signed, people will get familiar with them. There are local roads that we know the locals can use. The posted detours are primarily there for truck traffic, low boys, because, um, one of the deto- um, one of the local detours would cross over a, a hump in the railroad tracks. We don't want unfamiliar trucks getting stuck on the railroad tracks. So the posted detours are primarily there for trucks, but without enforcement, we really can't distinguish who's going where. So we know the local community will find shorter ways around the posted detours. They, they exist. But, you know, the posted detour will be for out of, you know, truck traffic and out-of-state traffic or somebody that's not familiar with the area. Once we do that. So basically, Tom, you can flip through these for me as you're going. Um, the first phase of construction is going to be leaving the traffic on the existing pattern and building the, the new, um, turn in the median on the other side. So that's the area that will be closed during phase one. As you can see, all the traffic stays on the existing traffic pattern. The only difference there being a shift in that lower left corner, um, to, so that we can take out that existing guard rail and stuff and, and do some of the widening that needs to happen there. The next phase, if you can, Tom. Stage two, we have the new turnover, the new crossover in place right here. So it's getting built here. That's what's getting built. And once that's open, we can start with the new traffic pattern. And once we switch over to that traffic pattern, we wanna keep it in that pattern. We don't want it going back and forth between the existing in construction because it's just gonna confuse the people that are there, what's open, what's not. So then, if you flip to the next stage, once that's open, go ahead, Tom, to the next, yeah, keep going. Once that is open, then we'll start building the corners. And these will be the weekend detours that were discussed previously because we just can't maintain traffic. There's not enough room to ensure a safe work zone without restricting some of these movements. So in this, in this phase here, we're building the widening in those, in those lower corners altogether so that we can get the traffic onto that new pattern. If you go to the next phase, um, you can see now we're doing the corners on the other side. This will be the second weekend. By phasing it this way is once we close that median, it can be curing while we're switching back and forth between the southern and the other one. So we're not adding additional phases at the end. We'll go ahead and get that median, that concrete built, it can start curing. And then we flip over to the second weekend. So basically, that month that it's gonna take for that concrete cure will overlap with the, the weekends as opposed to being additional time. And then if you go to the last phase, Tom, the last phase will be coming in after all of that stuff is, is done and building the concrete aprons that are outside of the actual, um, traveling path to keep, is, is, they put that in? So the last piece, you'll see, um, there's, there's some concrete work that happens in this median and over here. And this is really to keep people in the lanes that they need to be in so that we get rid of the actual conflicts that this project is, is designed to, um, to reduce.
Quick question. Start to finish, timeframe?
Um, Tom, do you wanna speak above? You mean the construction schedule?
Yes, sir.
Um, I can't speak for the exact time of it because we don't know when, how a contractor will phase it.
Okay.
But we, we're anticipating that there'll be two weekend closures, one doing the one corner, one doing the other.
Okay.
Um, if the contractor is efficient, the weather is, is cooperative, we should be able to do those maybe back-to-back weekends. But if the weather's not cooperative, it could be another weekend.
Okay.
But the idea will be that we want to keep that median closed and let that concrete get a cure on it before we start allowing truck truck traffic to to drive over it. And it really is the minor movement in there.
Right.
And that's why it's being restricted kind of in the first place. But just the geometrics of this intersection, the proximity to the interchange at three sixty, the great separated intersection. We wanted to make sure that we have this and it it impacts the least amount of traffic and allows us to build it. As as Diana said, this this really came up in the last meeting, kind of when we were looking at that and all of our construction folks really started looking at it in detail how we were going to build it. And they had just made some suggestions. There was a more efficient way to build it. So it should shorten the entire duration of the project by allowing us to to take this the median out of service for essentially a month of to allow it to shore.
Yes, sir.
Bright Speed.
Uh huh.
They're supposed to be working there at some point also. Have we heard anything from them?
Not right speed. It's it's a main street, whatever it is.
River Street.
River Street.
River Street.
River Street is our broadband provider.
Okay.
And they're going to be putting in a node.
Behind the, if you're familiar with the dumpster site there, they're supposed to be, well, when you come up on seven twenty-three to the stop sign.
We haven't tried anything from them, but we have an agreement that they're supposed to be working.
Yeah, they're going to be behind the dumpster site.
They have done some utility relocation based on this project.
Okay.
There were actually three companies that were that were doing relocation work.
So they're aware.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know if Bright Speed, I don't think River Street.
According to our right away system, the utility relocations are a hundred percent.
If you two have information.
I I have a question too. I use that intersection right there an awful lot. And my concern would be if you've got a tractor trailer coming in on seven twenty-three and I see them all the time coming in and stop. And they go straight across because they want to get to three sixty. Now they got to go down and make a big turn to get to three sixty?
If they're coming down?
If they're coming.
If they're coming north on seven twenty-three, they have to make a right.
I I would be really concerned about them coming back into four sixty. I would really be concerned about that. How how you going to have signage there that's going to let people know, hey, I got a dump, I got a tractor trailer making a left here?
Can you go back to the animation? So this is this this R-Cut design, this is one of VDOT's innovative intersections. They are used very frequently in North Carolina. This is not like they're a little new to Virginia, but they're they're not a new idea. These are being used all over the country.
Okay.
So again, you can see the actual trucks run. It will be signed and we have a signing plan in the construction set that says how to make all the motions. But if part of how we're widening out this area right here is going to force you to do that, that's why we need that truck apron so they know that they can't go straight. So we're.
He's talking about the amount of traffic on four sixty and the speed.
Exactly.
Yeah, because what he's saying is is they come in, the traffic's already going to be deterred to the right lane. So then that road tractor has got to turn in the right lane and then he's got to get in the left lane partially.
Right here.
Right, but he's he's partially got to get in that lane and he's partially got to still be in that right lane to turn.
So this this is designed, again, you'll see this is these are the actual truck simulations.
Mm-hmm.
Designed to go straight into that lane.
But I'm talking about the traffic that's coming behind it right now.
Right here?
Yes, sir. When he came out from the right.
Coming from follow that way.
It's going to be, what's the speed limit on the traffic coming behind him?
It's the same as it is today. So this through lane stays straight through and that this lane develops afterwards. So everybody comes into this same lane. That's part of the the design to not have two lanes. And this is a single lane today. That left lane has already been striped out, painted out.
Are you any familiar with the three oh seven up in Prince Edward?
I am not.
How that three oh seven comes into four sixty?
I am not.
It it are you are you familiar? I've heard a lot of complaints from officials in Prince Edward County regarding that. And I drive through it a lot with a with a fifty-one foot trailer and it's horrible. And this this looking at this, when when the traffic's coming behind you, I heard you say everybody's directed into that lane. But then that road tractor has got to get, he's got to make a left hand turn. Well, you got cars behind you. He's not going to stay completely in the left turn. You cannot stay completely in the left lane to swing out with the road tractor to come back. I think that's what Mr. Ingram's concerned with.
Yeah, that's that's scary to me.
Yeah, I think I think.
With that apron it is that they can run over top of it. It's like a roundabout.
It's a mountable, yes.
That's a mountable apron to to allow that to happen. It has plenty of sight distance back to that. And again, we have traffic simulations that supported all this that were done all through project development. This was came out of a a safety study. So the reduction of conflict points is where the safety comes from with this type of a design. And then, you know, if there's.
Well, let me ask you a question. Now, when they come around that circle at the top. The traffic coming from safe from crew going to be directed to stay in the left lane?
Westbound traffic.
Westbound, right here.
Westbound has got to stay in the left lane.
It stays in the left lane. And that's why these are being inserted.
You you eastbound, you eastbound right there. Move up. Yeah, now you westbound.
Right. So the left lane stays in this left lane. This is a right turn only lane. That's how it's labeled. And this is designed that that vehicle is in that right turn lane when he comes up because it's serving that motion, that straight through.
So it's going to go from a two lane to a one lane?
Back here, yeah. We bring it down to a single lane before we bring all this together.
I hope it's going to be a lot of signage up around Piedmont Geriatric Hospital.
Yeah.
And what was what was what was the purpose, what was the complete purpose for this?
It's primarily, I think we had a fatality out here.
On se- off of seven twenty-three.
There's a lot of fatalities.
At the last meeting, I I kind of gave the history of how this project came about. And for years, we have worked with the safety committee in Nottaway County. I think John Schu was on that committee for a long time. Helen Simmons was also on the committee. And they asked us to do something with this intersection. So they there were studies done. And then the Nottaway County, once the recommendation was made for what would work there, I know a lot of people wanted a stoplight. Well, it does not qualify for a stoplight and if there's any other interventions that we can do, such as this innovative intersection here, we are supposed to try to implement those first. And so then Nottaway County, the county planner at the time, who was managing.
It was made just for this project.
The application, they applied smart seal funding and it was approved at a hundred percent funding. So that's that's how the project came about.
All right, just one quick question. Sorry, go ahead.
The accidents and the severity of the accidents that happened there.
Right. How does this affect our emergency services? During the construction, you mean? Either way, before and after completion.
Well, well, Burkeville is going to be the one that's going to probably serve in this area.
Right.
And during construction, you know, emergency vehicles are allowed to get through there. They're most likely not going to not going to have a lot of issues today.
The only way that Burkeville would be coming is the eastbound. The only issue they would have is is to get over to the westbound right there. Otherwise, if they're going toward Crewe, they won't have any restriction. That's what I'm saying. Mm-hmm.
Right. If if you make a right hand turn, when you come off of route seven twenty-three, you make the right hand turn, you go to Crewe, you don't have to do anything else but stay in that right lane.
Right. If there was a wreck, if there was a wreck east of where you come out of Burkeville, but a very short way, you say a couple hundred yards. Then the then the the paramedics and fire trucks would have to, they would have to go through all of this. They would have to come down past the the place where they used to be able to cross over.
It's probably an extra three to five seconds.
Is that all?
It's a couple hundred feet. It's not very far. We start getting more than three, four hundred feet away from the intersection, it starts getting more complicated. But when people can see where the actual motion is, I mean, when you pull up there, you'll see where the U-turn is right away.
Okay.
And as far as the truck apron, it's there for for the large trucks and we just can't without enforcement restrict just trucks.
Right.
They're going to drive over if if they see it there. So an emergency vehicle, even while it's curing, I mean, after a day or two, construction vehicles drive on it.
Yeah, some truck drivers don't listen to restrictions. All we got to do is see what's going on at the bridge on forty-six.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of drivers don't listen to, you know, I thought when they added the single lane going east coming from Burkeville, that that has helped right much. You still get people like, you know, like I said, I I use that intersection an awful lot. And you have to watch people coming from toward Burkeville on four sixty because they won't give a signal. And they'll, they end up in the right lane turning on seven twenty-three, but I don't sit there and move until I see them make that turn. But I mean, that's a dangerous place. It's been a dangerous place for a long time.
It has been.
Got a friend who lost her daughter right there. And I hope this is going to help, but I it's going to take some people, local people, a lot of time to learn this. I'm really afraid.
It's not going to be that difficult to learn once you start driving in it. But this type of intersection here actually reduces the types of crashes because what we have out there right now is a lot of T-bone accidents.
Yes.
And this will actually reduce those types of accidents to more sad swipe accidents where it's massive property damage and not personal injury. And that's that's a big thing, especially with roundabouts. Roundabouts are the same way.
Right. And Dicky, I hear what you're saying. I mean, Mr. Ingram, I hear what you're saying here and I agree. But but as me personally, I do appreciate everything that y'all have done putting into this study and if it's safer for our citizens, let's go. That's just me.
We're approximately five months from advertising, so I just want to.
Good deal.
That out there as well.
Good deal. What's a project like its cost roughly?
Three point six million total project. That includes the the preliminary engineering, any right away activities in ninety-six percent.
Man, that's cheaper than an animal shelter. Did I say that out loud? You did.
Very fortunate here that the utility can be worked with. They they lowered the fiber lines as opposed to relocating them. So we didn't have to go outside the right way to do it. A lot of good things that are happening here, but we just wanted to to provide you an update on on that change of plan that we think is going to shorten the construction duration. And and kind of allow some of those activities to overlap as opposed to being, you know, in sequence.
All right, good deal. You good, Mr. Ingram? Board members?
Ready to go?
Thank you.
I'll be very careful when I come to the intersection.
I wear I wear my flagman suit for.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank y'all very much. Moving forward, Mr. Town Manager Miskovic is going to give us a water update. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It's kind of it's kind of weird. I think it's the first time I've publicly said manager, but congratulations on that, even though we've congratulated you already.
Thank you. I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I've got some candidates here. I meant to email them because.
And and y'all, board members, y'all may remember that there were some questions at one of our previous meetings. So Mr. Digg, I had a conversation and wanted them to come and give us some updated information as to what we had.
Right, exactly.
As to where the water issue is. But so go ahead, Mr. Mr.
This is a, this is really meant to be a be a briefing for especially the the newer members and the new county administrator. Good evening. I'm Phil Miskovic, town manager for the historic town of Crewe, and I ask to present tonight to brief the mostly new board and new county administrator on the water situation. That's been going on for several years. I want to preface by saying that several things I'll mention include opinions that are my own, based on my involvement from different perspectives on this issue throughout the years. Any editorializing I might do doesn't necessarily reflect any official position. You have a lengthy document that I just passed out that explains everything in more detail, so I'll try to keep this overview as high level as possible and as brief as possible. But there's a lot of background and a lot of moving parts which you'll which you'll see. So like I said, brief as possible, but here we go. So this issue all started about a decade ago when the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Developmental Services, DBHDS. Announced an expansion of the Virginia Center for Behavioral Rehabilitation, VCBR. VCBR is one of three state facilities now located in the town of Crewe. The other two facilities are a geriatric mental health facility, Piedmont Geriatric, also operated by DBHDS, and Nottaway Correctional Center operated by the Department of Corrections. Originally, VCBR was never intended for Nottaway County. The state wanted to put the facility in Petersburg adjacent to Central State Hospital, but people and and politicians in Petersburg and Dinwiddie pushed back. So the state put the facility here. VCBR, as you may know, is not a prison. It's a civil commitment facility that houses individuals who have completed their prison sentences, but for a number of reasons are still deemed a threat to society. A little more than a decade ago, changes to state law regarding who could be civilly committed to VCBR meant that more inmates being released were eligible for civil commitment. These aren't individuals you would necessarily want to double bunk, and even with double bunking, the facility was running out of space. It needed to expand. When DBHDS announced the expansion, the town of Crewe expressed concerns about water capacity, especially for future expansion phases. But with upgrades to our system, we could provide all the water needed into the future. I believe the VCBR expansion was budgeted at approximately one hundred ten million dollars, much more than a animal shelter. Crewe's water system upgrades would cost about twenty million dollars, adding fifteen percent to the expansion cost. DBHDS engineers ignored Crewe's request for about a year and a half. Crewe then went directly to the general assembly with a request, but that request was rejected. This was also the same general assembly session that then Governor McAuliffe tried tried to close Piedmont Geriatric, if you remember that, back in twenty sixteen. For the next few years, Crewe continued to make our concerns and solution known, but were consistently met with silence and pushback. Doesn't help that DBHDS went through no fewer than three directors of architecture, architecture and engineering during this time or that there was infighting between architecture and engineering and finance in the in the central office. But just moving on, eventually Crewe tried a different angle. My predecessor as mayor, Greg Eens, sent a letter to then Governor Northam requesting assistance to improve infrastructure and capacity. A month later, Mayor Eens, Vice Mayor Stinson and others met with cabinet secretaries and staff at the governor's office in Richmond. This eventually resulted in nine point five million dollars being added to the state budget for planning and beginning a water solution. The Department of General Services, DGS, basically the state's landlord and property manager, was named as project manager. DGS met with the town of Crewe on July first, twenty twenty, to begin the process. They told us that they would be hiring an engineering firm to evaluate all viable alternatives and come back with a preferred solution. So that's what they did for the next eleven months. So let's set that all that aside for for just a moment and talk about Prince Edward County. In May of twenty twenty, Prince Edward spent one point five million dollars to purchase a two hundred eighty acre, two hundred eighty acres of land to build a future data center park. So what is a data center and why does Prince Edward want one so badly? A data center is a very large facility that houses servers, the hardware where all digital data is stored. Anytime you do anything on the internet, play a game on your on your phone, whatever, the the data comes in and out of a data center. If you've ever heard of uploading something to the cloud, the cloud is basically data centers. As you can imagine, the more technology expands, the greater the need for more data centers. Especially now with artificial intelligence, chat GPT and other technology uses, they all use significantly more data, which means more data centers are required. Northern Virginia has among the highest concentration of data centers in the country. But they're getting tired of them, so they're seeing them expand. So we're seeing them expand further out. From one perspective, that's a good thing for the for economically struggling rural localities because data centers provide a lot of passive revenue. To put in perspective, a data center is somewhere around five, average data center is somewhere around five hundred thousand square feet. Each square foot of data center contains about two thousand dollars in taxable hardware. So a single data center has about one billion dollars in equipment. That equipment has an average life cycle of about five years, after which is it's replaced with brand new equipment. So depreciation isn't too much of a of a concern. All that said, it's a it's no surprise that Prince Edward want want to be, you know, trying to get a data center. At a recent board meeting, their county administrator told the board that if fully built out, Prince Edward would make up to twenty-five million dollars in new revenue from from that data center. Their current operating budget is about seventy million dollars. Injecting an additional thirty-six percent of new revenue into the budget could pay for everything from new schools to higher teacher pay, higher teacher and employee salaries to any infrastructure needs in a matter of years. The problem is that data centers require four things. Land to build massive facilities, fiber for high speed internet, electricity to power the facility and water to cool the servers. Prince Edward has the land and they've partnered with Mid-Atlantic Broadband and Dominion for both the fiber and the electricity. And they're currently marketing the data center as having water capacity of six million gallons per day. The problem is Prince Edward does not currently produce water. The closest water production is the town of Farmville, which only has somewhere around one point six million gallons per day excess capacity. So Prince Edward needs to build a water treatment plant at Sidney River Reservoir in order to get the water capacity they're promising Big Tech. The entire water treatment plant is broken into three phases. Phase one is building the water treatment plant and supplying water to Crewe's state facilities. Total cost for this is around fifty to fifty-five million dollars. Of this, the water plant is about thirty million dollars. Phase two builds the line to the data center, while phase three builds lines outward to Hampton Sydney College, which is not getting any alumnus donations from me anytime soon. Total cost of these phases is about thirty million dollars for a combined estimate of about eighty million dollars for all three phases. Building a new water treatment plant and water lines out is about an eighty million dollar project. Prince Edward doesn't have eighty million dollars to write a check, so they need to get financing. The problem is, in order to get financing, they need to demonstrate demand and a customer base. They don't have the data center yet, so they can't use that. So they're trying to get everyone they can to sign on to the project. Additionally, DEQ and the EPA don't generally allow permits to draw water only for economic development. They need to show human consumption need. That's where Crewe's state facilities come in. They provide both demand and human consumption. Prince Edward is clearly working with razor thin margins, so a big customer like our state facilities would boost their applications. They then they can get a get financing to build a water treatment plant to provide water to a data center. But those facilities are in Crewe. Before this year, they were in Nottaway County. The code of Virginia requires localities that want to construct or operate the water supply system in a neighboring locality must first get the consent of that locality. In early twenty twenty-one, Prince Edward tried to slip a resolution past the board that would have granted that consent. Luckily, Crewe was paying attention at at the only county economic development committee meeting in twenty twenty-one. We brought this issue to the county's attention and the board delayed a vote. Crewe then had a new solution. If Crewe expanded its boundary line to include the state facilities, Prince Edward would need Crewe's consent. The county could pass whatever it wanted in terms of allowing Prince Edward to to bring water into into non-Crew areas. The state facilities being in Crewe would also be required, would also require by ordinance, I'm sorry. The state facilities being in Crewe would also be required by ordinance to connect to our water system. Unfortunately, the previous board delayed any discussion on that issue for every year. The boundary line adjustment was later muddied by other factors until it was finally approved late last year. It's at this point, early spring twenty twenty, that the two issues, the the DGS issue that I talked about before and this Prince Edward issue began to merge. In late April of twenty twenty-one, DGS held a meeting with Crewe and Blackstone and went over the results of the engineering study I I mentioned earlier. Instead of Crewe providing the water, they they preferred a regional solution where Crewe would buy water from Blackstone wholesale and Crewe would sell to the state facilities retail. We asked at that time about the Prince Edward solution. DGS said that their solution was too speculative. So for the next several months, Crewe and Blackstone worked together on DGS's preferred regional solution until communication from DGS abruptly stopped in late fall of twenty twenty-one. In December, DGS told us that they had changed their mind and were going with Prince Edward instead. We asked if the arrangement would be similar whereby Crewe buys and sells water to the state facilities and they told us no. That the facilities would facilities would be buying directly from Prince Edward. I sent a little letter to a newly elected sworn, I'm sorry, newly sworn in governor Yonkin seeking intervention. After which point, DGS began to backtrack until ultimately signing in a MOU with Prince Edward in May. Over the next year and a half, we worked with the county and eventually met with the state secretary of finance last summer to discuss the Blackstone plan. But as we were working with the state and county, DGS was also trying to further bypass us. As as you remember, to sell the state facilities, Prince Edward always needed the permission of Nottaway until the boundary line adjustment, which they then needed the permission of Crewe. But someone found a devious way around that. Virginia's state budget operates on a two-year cycle with a budget in the first year and amendments in the second. If you remember, the twenty twenty-three general assembly session was in the second year of the biennium. That the legislature and governor couldn't agree on amendments before they adjourned. It was a look-alike for the only the second time in modern history, Virginia would have a. a budget without amendments. Then a committee of about a dozen conferees legislators, which are legislators from each body, men in secret to negotiate. Normally, no new budget language is accepted at this time. No one outside of the conferees and their staff even know what's happening, what the discussion is behind closed doors. But somehow, someone managed to get new language into the budget, item C78B. This amendment that no one had ever seen before was buried deep in the budget. We almost missed it. It said that Prince Edward was the preferred solution for the state's facilities' water, that Prince Edward did not need any consent, permission, or permits to connect to the state facilities, and that any land necessary for the lines would be taken by eminent domain. The proposed budget was only made public five days before the reconvened general assemblies would vote on it. Further, the general assemblies rule said no member could remove an item; the full budget was a yes or no vote in its entirety. Crewe found out about the amendment earlier that week. Obviously, we were outraged. Not only would this cripple us economically, but the process undertaken was perhaps the most anti-democratic action in modern Virginia history. State code section exists that's designed to protect localities from other localities poaching their water, water customers, and doing irreparable economic harm. The legislative process is designed to give anyone the ability to participate in the process by giving feedback and weighing in on legislation. This amendment was introduced after legislative session, when new language is generally not allowed. No one, including the people most impacted, were given the ability to voice an opinion on it. Our state representatives would deny the ability to debate it. No one can or will say how this amendment got into the budget. This amendment still exists today. If any good came from this action, it's that it brought our new state delegate, Lee Ware, to our aid. Delegate Ware worked with the governor's office, the secretary of administration, and the secretary of finance to pause implementation of the Prince Edward plan. The secretary of finance then issued a request for information, RFI, for any entity that sought to provide water to the state facilities. Crewe and Blackstone worked together on a response. Prince Edward submitted their own response. The secretary's office is currently reviewing those responses. At the same time, Prince Edward has been working on their DEQ permit application to withdraw water from Sandy River Reservoir. Last fall, DEQ issued a notice seeking comments and calls for a public hearing. Nottaway County, Crewe, and Blackstone submitted a joint response, which is in your packet, and asked for a public hearing. That public hearing was held on March 5th. Crewe spoke at that public hearing and also sent written comments, also in your packets. DEQ responded to those comments, and next week, we'll have a second public hearing to hear the responses to their responses. As I mentioned, this is a very complicated situation with many moving parts. The town of Crewe's only goal is to ensure safe, affordable water for all customers for both the short and long term. I can try to answer any questions you have, and you can also visit our website, savecrew.wordpress.com for more information.
Thank you, Mr. Miskovich. It sounds like the easy answer here is bring the data center to Nottaway.
Well, I would, yes.
It probably would cut not just what's going to affect us locally here, but the $80 million the state might be talking about throwing at this, that affects every taxpayer in the state. And it can cut that debt in half by working right here and bringing the data center right here to Nottaway County.
So the question is about a data center. The question is data centers in the future, because like I said, the need is increasing, and there aren't enough data centers to supply the projected need. I would recommend that, and we can talk about next week's economic development committee meeting, that we look at a potential for a data center in Nottaway County, because again, it would provide a lot of revenue. We would need water, so Blackstone, depending on if Blackstone is in favor of such a...
It depends on the size of the data centers.
Right.
Some of that could be dictated by what water's...
Absolutely. And there are some data centers that don't require as much water. I think Amazon has a new type of data center that reuses water rather than...
Recirculates, that's right.
But data center, and you know, Fort Barfoot would be a prime location, very marketable because of the security there as well.
That's right. So yeah, at the end of the day, Nottaway County got plenty of water to take care of all of its needs, economic development, data center, we can do it all.
You have our full support. I believe board members on the 24th, there was interest, some of us are going on Wednesday to show that Nottaway's interested in different things here.
Phil, you did a phenomenal job compiling all this information, and we know you've been following it a long time, and we do as a county have a dog in the fight. And thank you for making this clear to all of us. I wish we'd had this information a little sooner. You've done a great job with this, and John and I both share the Crewe district between District 2 and 3, and we are here to help you in any way we can.
Excellent, thank you. And I'm available for any questions, anytime you have them about the issue, and I've got so much paperwork and documents on everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miskovich. All right. Friends of the Library, Grace McDonald. Good evening.
I'm here today as the president of the Friends of the Library, mainly because we feel it's really important that you all, as county leaders, know that we are active in this community, and that you know what we're doing to help bring literacy and reading to the children especially. So the Friends help generate community support for the library. We build awareness of the variety of services and resources available. We provide support for programs. We buy special equipment, we buy books, and that may not otherwise be available at the library due to the current funding of the library system. One of these programs that we help support is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which sends books monthly to those children who enroll in the program from birth to five years of age. The current cost per child is $25.20 per year, and this is currently being taken advantage of by 220 children in this county. And the funding comes from outside the library now, the Friends, and there's many other organizations which particularly fund this one program. One of the Friends' major activities is the bookend at 102 Main Street in Blackstone. And this used bookstore helps the Friends raise funds, as well as provides the only bookstore in our community. The rent for us to have this bookstore is our major expense each year, and all the books in our store are donated by many book lovers, and we carry books for all ages. We encourage parents to stop by and check out a selection of young adults and children's books, many of which are marked with reading levels, and we also could be a great resource for anyone who is homeschooling. And as a way to increase our revenues this year, we've started to offer book-themed items such as t-shirts and note cards and jewelry, all at very reasonable prices, and everything is crafted locally and also all donated. We're currently open four days a week, Monday and Thursdays, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesdays and Fridays, 10 to 2, and we're closed on Wednesdays. We occasionally will have a special sale on Saturday, and the bookend is completely manned by volunteers. We now have a track phone that people may call us, it's 434-312-1185, and they can leave a message, and we'll get back to them on the next day that we're open. Also, Francis and Sarah Gilmore have generously offered us one of their windows to promote the bookend on Main Street and Blackstone, and so we'll post any information about upcoming events or special sales there, so that's a place where people get traffic up and down the street. So we're working hard to get information out about the bookend and the Friends. We also would ask that people would follow us on Facebook at the Bookend Blackstone, Virginia, so that you can keep up on our activities and specials. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, so any donations, either monetarily or books donated, are tax-deductible, and anyone associated with the Friends never receives any compensation. So we do participate in a lot of events, and I'd like to just quickly give you what's on our calendar for this year. So we partnered with the Rotary Club to distribute dictionaries to every third grader in the county. So that's one thing that affects everybody, and we've done that for many years. We've also participated in the community Easter egg hunt at Say Park, and we provided 300 children's books, which we're giving away free. We now have a Mother's Day basket raffle going on, which has some wonderful tea items and other items for mothers, and we have raffle tickets that can be picked up at the bookend. This month, we're doing a membership mailing to raise awareness of the Friends and hopefully increase our support and encourage people to become a volunteer or to help us in our efforts to promote reading and literacy in the community. We're also participating in the Juneteenth event in Blackstone, where we also give away very many books to anyone who stops by and says hello. We also support the summer reading program that's organized by the library and a way of monetary donation, and we also give supplies that we donate. The Friends also have a booth at Arts and Crafts to help promote the bookend and the library and what we're doing. And also, every year, we're on the Blackstone Library porch during the Grand Illumination, where we also give away books to children. And then during November and December, we plan to have another Christmas basket raffle as another way for us to raise some funds. Through all these events, we'll give away about 1,000 books this year in the community, which is, I think, a pretty significant contribution. So we hope also that you all will consider the importance of our libraries in the community, and especially consider any requests the library director asks for as you all work to finalize the budget for the year. And then tonight, I have an invitation for you, and we like to invite the public to come join us at our open house at the bookend. It's going to be on Friday, May 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we're going to have some light refreshments, so you can come and meet the members of the board of the Friends, and also some other book lovers in the community. So we hope that you all will take time to come and join us, and we do really would like to see the community come and join us, too. So with your permission, I'd like to hand you an invitation.
Thank you.
If you have any questions about what you do, like you'd like to answer them...
Good seeing you again, Grace.
Pardon?
Good seeing you again.
Good to be home again.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It has been, it has been a while. I'm glad to be home. They gave me a little break, but now they've got me back.
Okay, good, good.
But we do appreciate getting your support, and if anyone has books that they'd like to donate, you can call us if you want to drop them off, and there's no one in the bookstore, we'd be glad to do that for anybody that would like to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Thank you for what you and the rest of the Friends of the Library do. It's much appreciated for our citizens, our young citizens, and anyone who takes advantage of that or can help, it'd be greatly appreciated. Moving on to departmental reports, VDOT, Ms. Bryant? Not sure if she's here or not.
Mr. Chairman, before she gets started, we should have had a work session, and I apologize to her and her team. They got here on time. We should have had one at 6:30 concerning the six-year plan, but she's going to still give us some information, and hopefully we can still get on target of having a public hearing next meeting, possibly.
Yeah, it would be in the May.
In the May, anyway. But I'll get that information to you. We hadn't got a chance to discuss, but I'll call you tomorrow sometime, and we'll plan how we do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. Wanted to update you on some of the projects that we've got going on. The Route 46 project, the demolition on that's still continuing. The fixed completion date for that project has been adjusted to October 30th of 2024, and that's from the inavailability of the materials when the project first started. Contractor English Construction, they actually initiated contact with the town of Blackstone to allow crane on the barge for use to accelerate the project. However, the fixed completion date will still remain the same, even if the contractor predicts that he can finish early. The fixed completion date is part of the contract, so that will remain the same. Kerry Shop Road Project, Route 624 of Mallory's Creek, that was closed on February 5th. We're anticipating guardrail installation possibly starting tomorrow. If not tomorrow, it'll be next week. After that's done, the bridge will require a full inspection before being open to traffic. However, it does look like we may get it open the end of April, early May, instead of mid-June. I don't think I need to update you on the 723-460 project, so we'll just skip over top of that one. The Darvilles Road Project, the right-of-way phase is still scheduled for this summer, so everything is on schedule for that project. The remaining routes for the chip seal surface treatment should be completed by the end of April. The slurry seal application is complete. The only thing that's left mostly is pavement markings, and then we'll go through and do a punch list if there's anything, and so the chip seal and the slurry seal look like they're pretty much close to being complete. The gradual speed reduction study that we were doing for Route 46 and Route 40 approaching into Blackstone, that is finally complete, and I should have a draft for that soon. So the six-year plan, we talked about that before we started. We'll do our public hearing for that in May. And to keep the Highway Heroes event on your radar, that is scheduled for October 26th this year, from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Chesfield Fairgrounds, and it is free to the public. So this is new for the Route 460 from 360 to Prince Edward County line. We had an inquiry about the speed limit and why it was 55, and it was 60 into Prince Edward County. So I did some investigation on that, and I found the Virginia Code, 46.2-870 allows for counties to lawfully post signs, increasing the speed limit to 60 miles an hour after a subsequent traffic engineering study and analysis of the available and appropriate accident and law enforcement data. And these routes would include the non-limited access, multi-lane divided highways. So if the board wishes that we look into that, we have a traffic engineering study done on the section of 460 eastbound and westbound between 360 and the Prince Edward County line, it's at the board's discretion if we follow through with that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is the last thing that I have on my list. Do you all have anything for me?
Board members, if you've got any questions, Ms. Bryant?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bowen, the solid waste.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we have five of those giant, big tanks empty, and we have five more tanks we need to empty, and then we've got to clean them as far as the leche goes. We really do appreciate the town of Blackstone is assisting us, back in the process of helping us, and they're receiving five loads a day, but we still are, the Thompson hauling is still taking some to Lynchburg until we get that leche under control where we feel like it's safe and not create any problems that's against DEQ regulations. The one reason why the other five tanks are still there, we like to clean that, we've got to hire somebody to clean all 10 tanks before we send them back to them, to the company we rented them from. The TRC, I had a big, long conversation today with those at the engineering firm. Evidently, DEQ is requiring us to do a solid waste management plan. You have to do that every five years, and they're assisting me with that. I even mentioned, even though we're planning to go maybe to the tipping stations, do we still have to plan? I was hoping to get out of something, and she said, "No, sir, you will still have to do a plan." And that involves recycling and that type of thing. Mr. Ingram had just shared with me from another county, Buckingham County, I believe it was, to see if we can maybe improve our recycling program with tires and use some of their ideas. So I'll work on that.
I did have a citizen ask about waste motor oil, if a tank could be placed where they could come and go.
Okay. Right now, I think people mostly do is take them to, what are they doing, taking them to mechanics, I guess, if they take them...
If they got a waste motor oil heater, Epps just got a new one put in. They looking for waste motor oil.
Okay. All right, I'll take a look at that, Mr. Collins.
All right. All right, building inspectors?
The information's in your package, so was the animal control. I do want you to... I do want you to take a look at the number of calls on animal control, which is significant. I feel like 100, that's 30 days in a month. That's a lot of call, I mean, to me, it's a lot of animals I don't, we having problems with, but anyway, but we'll continue to be watching those numbers. And also that it's been added about dogs over 40 days, but they, and I'm not, I'm not really understanding about that it's in foster homes, but it's out of our shelter.
The goal was to make sure that we had space, particularly if there was a dangerous dog that needed to be come off the street.
So they're somewhere else.
Foster does take care of it.
Okay, good. All right, that's it for those two reports.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question on the animal control. I had a couple of citizens call me about the article, I don't know if you saw in the paper, about the dog attack in Crewe.
On Custer Street?
On Custer Street. Want to see what our animal control officers are doing to follow up on that.
Okay. You've got that, Mr. Bowen?
Yes, sir. All right, I'll give y'all, send y'all a response to that.
Thank you. And board members, y'all got your county library report in there. Is anyone from the school board here that wishes to speak? Okay, I saw them emphatically shaking y'all the ass head. Y'all didn't see it on the cameras, but I saw that. That was hair whips back there. Sonny, I didn't know you could shake that babe. All right, social services, Mr. Toth, with the retirement of Ms. Brigance, we would need an appointment out of your district if you've got any recommendations.
To the social services.
Yes, sir. So if you would like to.
Work on that.
Planning and economic development. This guy again. Love you, Greg.
All right, I want to give you a couple things real quick. As I mentioned earlier this evening, the planning commission did in fact recommend approval for the solar organs with three amendments and I've included a three amendments there. Recommended amendments, deal with setbacks, barbarian hoppers, and then the internal road note, which would be impervious, because we discussed that at the planning commission meeting. We felt that it was better that the concern with the impervious surface and running downhill and everything and potentially impacting our water sheds and our water supply. The other thing I have is I want to let y'all know that I have a conference plan amendment and that'll be coming to you all in June. Mrs. Ware, Rhonda Ware, who's right across from Burkeville, she's, I'm with Sherry Butrick with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation and she's seeking to preserve the farmland, 300 acres, its conservation residential zoning. The proposed future land use map has it identified as industrial and I certainly don't want to impose a future land use on somebody who clearly doesn't want it. They want to maintain, I think, the essence of a county and, you know, carry on the rural and agricultural character of the county.
All right, is that affected now because she's now in the town of Crewe, Illinois?
That's what happened, yeah.
So let me, I've got a map for each of you, just so y'all can familiarize yourself, but I'll take it to the planning commission first. We have no fee for this and I think, oh, for this one, I, we have no fee. We have no forms or anything. So I'm just going to give you all a separate, like a little planning commission and we could talk about fees next year. Because conference plan amendments are a huge revenue generator, but I'll do what I need to do to help y'all. Oh, there's the next one from Mr. Grant. So that was the second item.
Is this yours? Need that?
Yeah, thank you. As a solar memorandum, I do want to let the board know and the public know as well that I've started putting the planning commission packets online. I think that's something that elevates our transparency and I'm working on the economic development page and the zoning page as well as the planning commission. I'll probably do a consolidation of those to make it less, people don't have to go all over the internet to find them. The last thing regarding the planning commission is the rules of procedure. I gave a draft ordinance to them. I kind of regret after tonight placing a public comment on our agendas and stuff, but I did explain that it's good to be transparent and give people the opportunity to speak at a much less time, like three minutes each. But that, and then the last thing is we had a continuation last month and the 100 days for this project would expire later, next, later this month. And what I'd like to do for the Travolco case is request a 45-day extension for this.
All right, board members, y'all hear what he's asking for? Because if we try to shorten it, it's a longer procedure.
Yes, sir. Basically, what happens, and this is according to 15.22285B in the state code, we, the planning commission has 100 days to act.
Right.
So if we surpass that 100 days and we don't take precautionary action as I'm requesting tonight, then it moves forward to y'all as recommended approval.
Right.
And that certainly would not reflect what the board, the planning commission would may or may not say. So I'm doing this in the sense of transparency and we just.
So what exactly, you're asking for, 45-day extension?
Yes, sir. Because if we held it, because he'll be going to the March, May 21st public hearing and that would put it at like 133 days.
Okay, so 40, so what is the specific wording we need on that? I want to make sure the motion's right, 45-day extension for?
For the Travolco gunsmithing special exception.
Travolco?
Yes, sir.
Gunsmithing special exception.
Right. And, you know, this, my attitude is this, look, I'm going down the limb for him and if there's a continuance, then I have the right to re-refer this to the planning commission as a new public hearing.
Okay.
We'll have to go through the whole process again.
Okay.
And I just, I want to give, I'd like to give people a chance and, you know, it's up to him to.
Okay. Well, we want to be fair and open and welcome into new businesses and ideas, whether it moves forward or not, but we at least need to have these conversations. So board members, is there, can someone put a motion for a 45-day extension for the Travol gunsmithing special exception request?
I'll make a motion for a 45-day extension on the Travolco gunsmithing request.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you. That's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hyde.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Bowen, staff and citizens. Good evening again. Just a few things I wanted to cover that's not in your packet. These are new items since I sent the report up for your packet. The radio antenna at Southside Electric Cooperative on the existing system was repaired this week. Tower crew went up. This was the antenna and some associated equipment that went along with it to hook up there at Southside Electric to shoot that signal on the western end. We were having some problems with static and so, you know, we've got to do these things until we can get a new system. It's kind of like putting a Band-Aid on it, but this did a good job today. I understand from a lot of fire and EMS agencies that the clear, it was clarity all the way over into Prince Edward County, so we had, we had a good fix on that and that was a crew that came out of Prince George to fix that. I want to thank Jimmy Falwell for helping to, you know, to line up the tower crew and, you know, he's just done a lot of work on this. So Jimmy, working with me side by side every day, he was able to, he's our radio tech guy. Also, National Communications Week, telecommunications, excuse me, Telecommunicators Week, you'll actually see it on the websites in both ways. We honor the telecommunications and the dispatch center this week nationally and so what we usually do is we give them food. The fire and EMS agencies usually jump in along with CTA, Ms. Cheryl Jigges, that's our consultant. She did two days of pizza, I believe. And normally, we have other entities do it. I want to thank Burkeville Chief Brian Welch, Assistant Chief Brian Welch, had one day, I believe, today, tomorrow's Blackstone, I believe, and I think the Notaway Emergency Squad is the next day. So we just try to do that. Sheriff Jones started it off, you know, with the first day of food. So we want to thank them and honor them for being there. You know, they are the first responders, if you hadn't heard, because the call comes to them first. They're the first first responders. Also, today, I attended another regional meeting in Buckingham County. This one's over in Dillon. Of all the people that are counterparts to me, and we had another good meeting today and the common areas are all the same. I mean, look, you just put a different county logo on it, that's all you got to do. They have the drug box issues like we are, we are ahead of everyone else, but Buckingham is right there with us. They showed us their room today. They've addressed the issue, they've got the licenses, so I think right now, Notaway and Buckingham is pretty much it in our region. Now, the others are coming, but what we're planning on doing, and Brandon Jenkins talked to me this week, this is a good opportunity to showcase Notaway in the way that the drugs have been, you know, the drug issue has been addressed by being proactive and so what he wants to do is have like a webinar and I think that's a great idea and he asked me, could I like do opening comments and I'm more than happy to do that, but just have us come on there and have people call in to say, hey, Notaway, how did you do this? So we're looking at doing that. I don't know if Brandon still has that on his plate or not, but they said today, I went on and floated it today and everybody in Buckingham and the surrounding area said they would be interested in doing that. They want to take a tour. And I think actually Brandon's got a couple of people coming down either today or yesterday, I mean, excuse me, today or tomorrow, to look at the building over here in Crewe, which is where, you know, he's doing what Notaway Emergency is doing. And I know Chief Schut's working on his in Burkeville. And Blackstone's going to keep their drug program too. So Blackstone and Fire Department has a first responder program that actually has some drug boxes, so they're going to keep theirs and work on theirs. Okay, the, as far as other issues go, grant opportunities, we talked about that, we talked about radio issues. Prince Edward is fast-tracking their radio. They were right along, just a little bit ahead of us and now they're going to be about a year. So they will definitely be getting theirs in quicker. Amelia was pouring concrete on two towers, they're building two towers in their system. So today, they were actually had the contractors and Amelia doing that. You know, we'd only proposed putting one tower up in our system, but again, they are agreeable to us going on that Soapstone Tower, which is over near 307, if we, if we do our project and, and we need that tower to help out. Moving forward, Mr. Rourke wanted me to mention this, we had a good cleanup day over at the Fire Training Center, which I like to call the Public Safety Training Center on Rocky Bump Road. So Lee Williams, as many of you know, is in the Blackstone Fire Department. Lee and I are good friends from way back and Lee called me and he said, can we get the inmate workforce and can we get a dumpster? So the dumpster first, I called Mr. Easter. No problem. He supplied a 20-yard dumpster out there to the center courtesy of Solid Waste. They put 2,800 pounds in it. That was the tonnage that came back across the scale, 2,800 pounds. I want to thank Shane Hawkins, he really made it happen. He knocks it out of the park. Called him up and he said, what do you need, buddy? And I said, you know, can you get the inmate crew over there? And so the inmate workforce crew with Correctional Officer Watkins came out and they did whatever Lee Williams asked them to do. And I wanted that two days in a row, but Lee was out there working, he had his own personal tractor and everything, so we were, we were having a good time with that. But the partnership was established and this is important. Mr. Hawkins was able to establish a partnership with the workforce center from Notaway Correctional Center to cut the grass out there. So this is, we're trying to do as much as we can to help that training center as they try to clean it up and get it ready and make it better for the future. So also the partnership is there that they can do some light painting. There was some painting that needs to be done on the building. The building is in need of a lot of repairs and they're going to do that as well. Now, back to March, we also had Mr. Hawkins set up the crew and Mr. Easter bring two dumpsters to the Health Department and I forgot to mention that at the last board meeting, but they brought in a 30-yard dumpster and a 20-yard dumpster for us to clean at the bottom of the Health Department right across from the EOC. And all those years of things that would need to be discarded, we ended up putting a total of 4,500 pounds of things that came out of one side of that Health Department basement on the other side from the EOC. So we were able to do that. Mr. Easter took it all back to the landfill and again, Mr. Hawkins and the six inmates that day along with Officer Watkins. So just kudos to all of them, the LRA and also the Notaway Correctional Center and Solid Waste. All right, last but not least, if there's no questions in the packet of anything that you had for me and I know, I know we're trying to move on, we have this radio project that we've been working on and our Public Safety Communications Committee and CTA, who was here last month, have been communicating regularly about the contract negotiations and with JVC Kenwood and to reduce the cost on the system. We all know about that, we've all been talking about it. So we just dug down, CTA, we had, we told them what we wanted to do. We told them, try to get the price down. And so we also had a meeting that included Mr. Collins and Mr. Bowen. Mr. Toth couldn't make that one, he was trying to dial in, but Mr. Collins was there right at the table with us. Ms. Cheryl Jigges with CTA came in as the organizer of the meeting because she had the data we needed, so we virtual'd in a few people and we had our fire and rescue folks there as well. We had Jimmy, we had Joey Shinapp and several others on the calls. She is here tonight with the new data that we are looking for. I had her bring it in, we printed it up, put it on a nice one-pager, two-sided and it's here and I'm going to give you copies of it now, but she's here tonight to give us revised cost figures and explain what we changed to get the cost down. Mr. Bowen, did you want me to, any additional information from, you know, research, anything you wanted to brief on or, or Mr. Collins? I believe Mr. Collins, is there anything that you wanted?
Let me see it.
Me to yield, okay. All right, if you would, can I approach? Okay. All right. And if you'd like this to come up. Give me a copy. All right, you just take one and pass it around, Mr. Toth.
All right. Thank you, sir.
There we go, one more from Mr. Bowen in there. Any questions? We went back and, you know, we did a lot of back and forth, but, you know, some things that the committee felt strongly about, but then there was also some things the committee said, yes, we can do without, so we did, we did compromise on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, so we have had a lot of conversations with JVC Kenwood and the committee as well and if you look at the first page of your document, so we are going with the four-site, four-channel system. We had contemplated five sites, so pulling, excuse me, had contemplated four, five channels, always four sites, but five channels. In our original study, we decided that based upon all of our studies and all of our engineering, we only needed four channels at each site to hold us for the next 15 to 20 years. The committee concurred with that. If at some point later down the road, you were able to get grant funding, it's about $250,000 to add a fifth channel to all of our sites because it is equipment that has to be placed at each and every radio frequency site, RF site, that can be added very easily. So we talked with JVC Kenwood about it, it can be something that you add at a later date. The other item that was sort of a big-ticket item that we were hoping to remove is go back to 185-foot tower at the sheriff's office. The committee was really very thoughtful about that and want to keep that at a 300-foot tower. The reason for that is we do have potential of bringing revenue in on that tower. You could likely get at least to sell commercial carriers on your tower. That would probably bring in a little bit over a million dollars over the next 15 years. So they felt very strongly that they wanted to make that investment in the future. We are still meeting all of our coverage guarantees. All of our technology basically is staying the same. We were able to negotiate a lower price for our remote consoles, which is something that the sheriff and the ECC felt very strongly about. If they have to vacate for any reason, the ECC, very quickly, these remote desktop consoles are something that they can keep the continuity of service for our 911 operations and we're basically able to cut those prices in half. We did also increase the push-to-talk over cellular, so we now have about 100 users that can use that. That is something that can be a cost savings, not only initially, but long-term. You can use that app on a phone so that you do not have to buy the more expensive radio in case that's something that a user did not want to carry with them. We did some tweaking with our microwave network. We'll be using primarily outdoor units, which is still public safety grade. We did have a concern up near 307, so that site will continue to have indoor units. So basically, that brings us down a little bit, about $400,000 or so from the last time I spoke with you. So, basically, that brings us down a little bit, about $400,000 or so from the last time I spoke with you. Before we get into the numbers, I really would like for you to look at the schedule. That's really at the bottom of that first page. You will note that Project Award was supposed to be complete at the end of first quarter '24. We've now gone beyond that. We are now into second quarter. So, I would like you to be very cognizant of the fact that if we don't move forward quickly, it is likely that we would not finish this project at the end of 2025. It will go in significantly into 2020, 2026. That's primarily because we will miss our foliage window. We have to test in full foliage, which we believe if we start quickly, we can still do that in the September timeframe of 2025. If we miss that, we will not be able to test again until probably about May. It will depend on the weather that particular year in 2026, whether or not we have full foliage at the end of April, like possibly this year, or if it will be a little further into May. So, our price now is down to $7.1 million. That would be the contract price with Kenwood. We do recommend that you have contingency in your budget, just in case something were to come up, especially being we're building a tower. It'll just depend upon what our location is, if there's something that happens that, you know, you, you hit bedrock or you have to shore up the earth underneath the tower. We want to make sure that we have some contingency dollars there. And then, of course, we will take off our COPS grants. So, our total system cost would be 6.4 million. I think where we affected the most change is in our ongoing costs. Our maintenance has come down to $2.5 million. We basically removed things into the optional category that we feel like you can consider at a later date. This particular amount of 2.5 million does give you the maintenance that you will need, not only preventive maintenance, but ongoing maintenance if something were to happen to your infrastructure. They would be here within two hours, and they would correct it very quickly to make sure that you stay operational. So, that brings us down from over $300,000 a year to $180,000.
Thank you.
I have two questions on which, on, on. One thing, when you were talking about adding the fifth channel?
Yes, sir.
You said, mentioned 15 to 20 years, all right.
Yes, sir.
The maintenance agreement goes through 15 years.
Yes, sir.
If, if the system's in place and goes 20 years, that maintenance fee does not go away. Is that correct?
We would recommend that it not go away, correct.
Okay. What would, after the end of 15 years, would that maintenance fee have to be renegotiated?
Yes, sir, it would.
Okay. And then, I was, I had, I had a concerned party say that they were told that the chargers were not included in the price of the handhelds.
Yes, sir, they are.
They are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chargers and speaker mics. It would be a desktop charger and a speaker mic.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question too, if you don't mind. So, I know we, we cut, we, Buddy, Buddy Hyde and I, we met with Dr. Grimes and Heather Meyer and about these, and one of the, because they, they wanted to be part of this radio program, you know, for the safety of the school buses. And I know we did a lot of cutting back. But what my question is, let's say we don't have enough radios for all the school buses, but if, if the school says, hey, well, we're gonna apply for some kind of grant on our own, can, they still can get radios to match ours? They don't have to go through this contract or whatever?
Absolutely, they can use your contract. That's one of the things we negotiated in our terms and conditions, that the pricing would be the same for them, so they would not have to go back out.
Okay, and they can seek funds elsewhere.
Absolutely. And we did design the system to be able to withstand them on your capacity. So, the system is prepared to accept them.
Okay.
Once they have the funding.
They designed it, okay.
Well, I had one other thing. All right, board members, now, everybody cool your jets, okay? I'm just gonna ask a broad question. How many people use this system? And out of all the users, why is Notaway County the only one putting money in?
All the users being like the town police departments and fire departments and EMSs, all the EMSs is part of Notaway. Two of them probably don't have any money. That'd be a really good reason not to. But it's just a viable question.
I watched the third town council meeting the other day. Nothing there this year either.
Well, I would love to see them share the cost for us to make it more affordable. At the same time, I'm ready to move forward with this thing. I'm, I, it's kicking the can if we don't. We gotta get it funded. I would at least like us to, to give our attorney the contract.
That has been done.
The attorney has looked at the contract, the revisment was made. Wasn't it a couple of revisements that needed to be made?
Those are only on the technical side.
And that's been done?
Yeah. The attorney has approved the form of your contract.
All right, what you guys want to do? I'm ready to move forward with this thing. And the towns are not, so the other towns are not, they, they said too. How about on the maintenance?
This budget year, that's, that's what I want to tell you, Bo. Wait just a second. $180,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
Over that period of time, 15 years. I'd like to have discussions with the towns. Let's get this in your budgets as we go, whatever you can do.
To help the maintenance part of it.
To help the maintenance.
That would be a significant help to them.
Whatever, you know, if it's, if it's $20,000, if it's $50,000. And you can do it based on their number of users. If you just wanted to say, you've got 25 users on the system, and each user's gonna cost X number of dollars. If you could try to get to that number, that would help us. It doesn't have to be this year, just like with us this year. You know, we're still working on our budget. If we go ahead and make, make the decision, get started, meet the window on the foliage.
So, we got, we gotta get the ball rolling quickly, talking to these towns.
We saved some money, I don't think there's any more to save.
Other than getting the towns to help us out as a county on the maintenance part of it.
And I, I think that's a fair request.
I absolutely think it's a fair request. That's a, that's a, a cheap way of getting by.
If we can do 6.4 million, get them a new system, and if they can help us take care of it, I think that's a pretty reasonable.
I think it is too. I agree totally. I'm ready to go talk to them.
All right.
What do we need to do, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I, I, I think at this point, Mr. Hyde, do y'all have any appropriate wording for a motion at this point? So, I want to make sure we cover everything in the motion and the, I mean, with the understanding that this is all public now, there, there will be some conversations with the towns. And understand, once we commit without any communications with the towns, it's our baby.
I understand.
I do understand, but I also understand the towns that we're dealing with. I don't think they backstab us.
That's right.
I don't think they backstab us. And if they got the money, they, they would help us do the maintaining of it.
Right.
But if they threw their hands up and say, we ain't got the money, we can't help you, then we, we, we need to back up and punt, but then we gotta, we gotta strike again.
Yeah.
We gotta move forward on it.
Yep.
So, in wording of the motion, just off the cuff length, it's our intent to see if the town would help us with the main, maintenance of it, all that they can, all of the maintenance, that the county don't cost any. We don't inherit any cost, no, we're going forward with it.
That'd be the ideal, but I don't know that you're gonna get there, Bo.
Well, it would be ideal, but they, but they can say it's their intent, and if they got the money and the budget, if that was their intent, then they need to pay it.
Well, I think realistically, what we can do here is only prove to move forward with that.
That's what I'm saying. You know, the, the maintenance doesn't start till next year.
Mr. Chairman, you'll sign the contract?
Yes, sir.
And I'm weighing in. At the end of the day, it all rolls into all our discussions lately about EMS, emergency services, everything. What's the cost of a life? We've got to quick kick in the can and do something so our providers don't get hurt.
If we can afford, can fund it, that's right.
And it's a county responsibility, because at the end of the day too, we've been talking about how the volunteer bases are drying up. And one of these days, it's gonna happen, maybe not in our realm, but it may become a county responsibility to provide the funding for everything, because the volunteer base, we may have to start paying services.
Well, and it's.
They did a good job. They, they've got a lot of them with pagers now instead of the radios. So, they, I mean, we whittled and whittled and whittled. So, let the citizens know that it's been a tough three months for me, because this was a very expensive project. And Bo and I have talked several times. I had no idea that something like this was this expensive. Talked to several other counties, and it cost what it cost. I'll make a motion to accept the JVC Kenwood contract at $7,143,103.05.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Now that we're in the discussion phase for this, now that we got a second, is, are you, should that motion have been 6.4?
JVC Kenwood contract, 714310385.
And apply it to that, correct?
That grant will be applied.
Right.
I see you said 7420.
714310385.
Buddy, I have a question. With this grant, is there a capability down the road to apply for another?
That's what I'm talking about.
Or is this a one-shot deal?
Well, I, I wouldn't say no, but this was a special invited to Notaway County.
Just change the motion, just change the number on the motion.
This program will still be there. We are gonna continue to pursue grants. You know, we've already written another grant to cover some of the services. And when that was rejected, but that was for, I think, less than $200,000, we're gonna continue to pursue. There's three, three more avenues that we can apply to the radio system.
Okay.
And as Ms. Jigget said, you know, we can actually bring on some of those, that fifth channel possibly, if we wanted to in the future with a grant. But certainly, and maybe even cover the services too.
Excuse me, Mr. Hyde, I need to, I need to make an amendment to my motion. We're gonna add in the contingency on the motion, so the total system cost,
Do you wish your second to stand, Mr. Toth?
Yes.
That's correct, Mr. Collins.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, as we're in this discussion. Mr. Hyde and myself and, and of course, Jimmy, Jimmy Falwell, we, we, one of the reasons why they really want to keep the taller tower is because we, we, we gonna try to come up with, one time, Bill, you had asked us, you know, give me a financial plan. Well, part of the financial plan is, we need to be aggressive and call Verizon and say, hey, we got this 300-foot tower up here.
The numbers was about $90,000 a month, if you filled with three tenants.
Right. And, and so, I think we need to be aggressive to, to help, to help with that as well, you know?
Absolutely.
And so, I just want you to know that they're, they understand that, and they are willing to reach out and start making some contacts, and what do we gotta do?
And while we're still got it in for discussion, I will emphasize, we will be contacting the three towns for their help, and we expect their help.
I would be curious if the towns would be eligible for their own grants to help with the maintenance of an emergency radio system?
Possibly. I, I think, you know, moving forward, the figure that you just voted on is the, for the ownership, it's a county system, so there will be partners in the maintenance if, if they agree to that. And I guess, however the grant language would be, I mean, I've dealt with a lot of grants. It could be that, you know, with us being the owner, we need to be the one writing that grant. But, but it's worth looking into. I think all of these things are worth looking into.
Right.
And if, and if you would, if, I would like to add to what you, Mr. Bowen just said. Keep in mind, when you talk to constituents and everybody listening over here tonight online, is the 300-foot tower also has a very, very, probably the first important thing is, it's on the second tallest bump in the county geographically. And this 300-foot is, is the hopes that we have. It's gonna get to that western end and shoot over Burkeville and into Prince Edward County and help, even if we need the Soapstone. So, so the height of it for the reception was like number one, and then revenue was like right there with it. Make sure you mention that, because that was important to the height.
Okay. And board members, if, if I may, I just want to share some other concerns that came from the public as this has moved forward before we pull the vote. All right, one of those concerns being, uh, and see, because nobody wants to tell the volunteers or any of the fire departments, sheriff's department, anybody, no. I mean, you don't ever want to do that, because, like you said, what is a life worth? You know, not just for our first responders, our police officers, but the citizens as well. So, it, it, it may be hard to say this, but for transparency, I was asked, I said, I bring it to y'all. So, the end of the day, the, the need for the walkies, the handhelds, you know, once you get on scene, it becomes a, they switch to a tactical unit channel, as I understand it. So, is putting a repeater in the vehicles something that will boost that signal so their handhelds work?
So, so we gave you a rundown on the repeaters for vehicle systems when we talked about STARS.
Mm-hmm.
Vehicular systems are limited. Surely, they boost, but this system in design, and Ms. Jigget has some good information on that. But look back at that document that I sent to you, all of you, I think we, a couple of months ago, where it actually addresses that part of it. You know, one thing about vehicular repeaters are, and, and, you know, we had talked to some others about it. Sometimes you have 100-foot range, sometimes you have maybe a little bit more. If we want to search and rescue in the wilderness, and it could be we've all left our vehicles, you know, that's one of those situations. That's one scenario that you may not actually hit your repeater. Ms. Jigget, did you have?
I spoke with a deputy last night, Mr. Chairman, that just happened to pull up to him on a closing business that he was there, and I asked him about radio. And he said he was involved in a foot pursuit in the town of Crew, and he ran two blocks all the while while trying to dial the sheriff's office off his cell phone, because his radio wouldn't work.
Right.
So, I looked into that repeater, because you and I have talked a lot about that. And I talked to the sheriff about it, and it, it, it's great. It, I think it works real good within a closer proximity of the, of the police unit. And I think two city blocks, I don't think it would work at all. Or two town blocks, we, we don't have citizens out there, but you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
But it would save a tremendous amount of money if it would work. But I think we can, and I like to say that this system works more than 15 or 20 of the proposed years, because the current one, we've got, been here since 19, what, '89? Been here very long, and it may, with some upgrade. It may need a little bit of upgrade. This is a, more than an upgrade that we're doing right now. There's three major things facing the county, and this is one of the major things.
Right. I, I, I mean, I agree. It's, it's just, you know, I, I feel like, you know, with, with the amount of concern, because you, you guys know how long we've been having these, some of these conversations. And it's a, it's, you cannot put a value on a life. I've said it many times, you said it again here tonight, you can't. But at the same time, we owe to have that conversation.
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's what I was doing.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that Mr. Toth and I have spent three months negotiating this contract down.
Right.
So, we've done our best, and we'll, we'll move forward.
All right, well, board members?
Sam, and I have another question. As far as the cost of the tower, the tower will be located at the sheriff's office, correct? If we have to move in this pending potential courthouse renovation or building, if we have to move it, is there an exponential cost that we're gonna have to pay to move that tower?
I have to believe last year.
I thought about that today.
Yeah, I asked about that last year.
I didn't think it up, I thought.
She'll tell you.
We'll be taking that into consideration. The tower will be in this general vicinity. We will take into consideration what your future plans are, to ensure that it does not have to be moved.
And also, will Burkeville be able to keep their existing system?
Yes.
It'll be optional for them, right?
They fully intend to keep their system.
They fully intend to keep their system.
But will their system be able to sync and work with this new system?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, board members, this motion on the floor, properly second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Have at it.
On behalf of all of our first responders and radio.
It's a can at the back. If you got any love donations for it, drop it in.
Pass the hat.
By the way, that can he's talking about is the one we just stopped kicking.
That's my, you're exactly right. Exactly, I was gonna say it with my hat, but I like your idea better.
All right. All right, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Collins, Piedmont Regional Jail Authority.
Oh, let's see.
If it's more money?
I've got some money.
There you're talking, uh-oh.
All right, well, maybe we won't get asked for one. So we had a capital improvement project over there that involved a, a bar system.
Bar screen, yes, sir.
Yep, bar screener with a grinder on it, so that is done, each member county contributed 75,000 dollars. And Steve and I reviewed that on our tour. And got to check it out. And then, uh, right now there's 141 federal inmates that are staying at our jail. And all that money that it's making, we're at 300% of budget, we're, we're making money. And so that's going to reduce any capital requests coming from the member counties. If there's anything else.
And, and they, they are taking federal inmates back.
141 are in there right now.
Gotcha.
And that's, so that's, that's 300 over budget, 300% over budget. And that helps the member counties by reducing capital requests.
Yeah, that, um, that escape was scary for one thing, but, but.
Yeah, the, uh, the new security doors are getting ready to go in.
Yes, sir.
They'll be, will be more secure, they're going to work on a fence with motion detectors on it. So they're, they're working over there.
Right, well, thank you for that update, Mr. Shane Hawkins, the LRA.
Good evening, thank you all. I just have a, a few highlights and notes to, to report on. Some things we already talked about in the LRA meeting, this is just updates. The LRA supplied the Foo Bank on post, which is a veterans building, with a number of, of extra tables so they can lay out their surplus for people to come through on the weekends. And it helps with their organization. And I had the work crew help do that, the inmate work crew, they've been very beneficial to us. We have money that is coming to us through an insurance claim, we're going to demo a building that is partially collapsed on, on base we had talked about. That's going to be happening really soon. The county has agreed to move forward with Sally ports for security purposes at the General District Court Building. I've got that lined up with the contractor, I think he's in the process now of getting his permits together. And that'll be happening really soon and eventually, hopefully, for the circuit court.
Yeah, the reason why I held up on the circuit court is because underneath there's a tunnel where cars will be parking and I got to make sure that a car won't go through that tunnel.
Weight distribution, I got you.
I got to check that out, but anyway, that's the only reason why.
Yeah, we didn't know.
We didn't know the tunnel was there, we know it now.
There's a tunnel already?
Yes, Mr. Nick started, our building official started crawling around, if he didn't find it, we'd have been all right.
What sort of tunnel are you speaking of, like a man tunnel?
Yeah, maintenance tunnel.
Maintenance, what, steam pipes and?
There's tunnels all over.
If you go to sheriff's offices, they got a, I think that's where the boiler was located.
Now the crook's nobody.
Yeah, probably. Well, Sheriff Graham, if you hear somebody underneath you there, you just have to.
Fill them up with concrete, move along.
Yep, I think Nick saved us some embarrassment if we started digging and fell through, so.
I'd be some belt buckle or something. Airheads.
And at the current animal shelter, we have some plumbing repairs, just to update circulating pumps. And some plumbing repairs have been put off a while. We still own and maintain the building and it was necessary to do that and it's very helpful. And I know the, the staff there are very grateful that we've given them attention.
I heard that was a problem over there, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I appreciate it and I'm just a facilitator, we have people there that are working and they do a great job, so I'm just trying to do the part. Last thing I'll mention to you is, and I spoke with Mr. Bowen earlier about it. Notaway Lanes, which has been an issue off and on. With the help of an outside attorney, we put together a lease termination agreement. I met with the owner of Notaway Lanes, my assistant and I, Joyce, we met with them.
The tenant of Notaway Lanes or the owner?
The owner, the owner. Well, we own Notaway Lanes, the building.
He's a tenant.
You're exactly right, you're exactly right.
Okay.
So, I met with them in person and handed them the lease termination agreement that the attorney came up with. And I got a verbal from him that he would go quietly and agree to it. He didn't sign anything, but he agreed to it. The date of finalization is 5:00 on April 30th. He's going to hand the key, Jimmy.
So, to, to, to piggyback on what he just spoke of, I've reached out to someone who understands bowling alleys and may be interested in managing as well. That's going to be a business situation, but I won't talk too much in open session. However, the reason why I had to contact this person is because evidently we got 12 lanes, only four work.
Yes, sir.
And the tenant claims that they never have worked correctly.
That ain't true, right.
So.
Say, we need to make sure if any damage is done, they'll be taken care of.
When, when, after April 30th, I'm going to go over there and bring this, this gentleman and his team in there to, and.
Do an assessment.
Do an assessment and see what we got, okay? And, and see what kind of improvements we're going to make, but let's, let's, let's get the key back first, okay?
Well, certainly under attorney's advisement.
Yes, sir.
That, that tenant was made aware that if there's any destruction done to the property, that he going to help, be held responsible for it, did he not?
I think the wording in, in most leases is like that and, and I let the attorney explain it to me. That we're going to try to do a clean break, anything that he says was not working when he moves out, it's a wash. Anything he put into the building, let's say he put in new ceiling fans or a new door.
Well, if he didn't get, if he didn't get the consent of the county or.
Exactly.
Then, then he could put all the ceiling fans in there anyway, in fact, we can charge him for the ceiling fans he put in there.
Exactly, and it conveys with the building when he leaves, that terminology is in the lease.
Attached property.
Is there a document that details the condition of all functioning units on the day of the lease start?
I'd like to know that, I would think so.
I thought we were put under the impression that it was to be returned as, as it was.
The, what we need to find out, and I had a short conversation with some of the staff today. What we need to really truly find out is, did, do we have something written somewhere that says everything was in functional when they, when they took it over?
If you don't have that, then.
Well, if you don't have that, then you can assume if he was paying the rent on it, he wouldn't have obligated himself to something that was dysfunctional.
But maybe we can find something, maybe we can find something.
There is a way to find that, the other people that went in there.
I think we need to continue this discussion, Mr. Chairman, in a work session so we can move along.
Yeah, I'm going to get the key back first, that's right.
Let's get the key back.
I think we're in the right direction though.
Sometimes when people get upset, they tend to tear up stuff. Being in the rental business, I know firsthand and I would sue them for it if they did.
Yeah.
And he needs to be made aware of that before he tears it up.
That's, yeah, that's something that the outside attorney is aware of.
Have you been in, you been in the building?
Sir?
You been in the building?
Yes.
It's clean and?
It is, I will say it's clean. And, and one of the things he, the, the tenant mentioned to me was a lot of televisions he put around, probably like 15 or 20 large televisions. Asked if we wanted them to buy them and they conveyed, and I said.
There are, if he, if a fixture there are was.
Yep, and, and I mentioned that and we didn't go any further, I said, I'll let the attorney talk to you about that.
Did you snap any pictures of them televisions hanging in there while you was there? It'd be a good idea to get back over there and do it.
All right, when's our next LRA meeting?
But those are the things we'll try to work out.
I think we have one in May.
All right, if anything comes up different, we'll just call a special LRA meeting.
Okay, we can do that.
So hopefully, it, it will go smooth. The, I will tell you, the tenant's attorney and our attorney, outside attorney are, have a good relationship and I think they're going to come to terms.
Good, that's good.
All right, what else did you have, Mr. Hawkins?
That's going to be it.
All right, well, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Shane.
Giving us the updates.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the constitutional officers reports, I do not see Ms. Brown, sheriff, I believe the sheriff is outside. I know they're throwing a party out there about that tower, I know they are. They're out there drinking, smoking, breaking it along, I'm kidding.
We still in here two and a half hours after we started.
You have your treasurer's report, Ms. Hudson is here. How are you?
Please, I'm ready to go, Dave.
I think we're going, I think we're going, I think we might bring her in on new business.
Yeah, bring her in and new.
Okay, we're going to bring you in on new business then, okay?
Possibly.
There you go. Did you have anything, Sheriff?
I just want to thank the board for moving forward on that radio project, it's something we've been doing, working with the last two years. And we finally got to the point where we were able to get numbers and again, like I said, I appreciate all of y'all, that's what I'm giving you too.
All right, thank you, sir, Ms. Waters? Okay, unfinished business, animal shelter update, we got anything you want to talk about, about the animal shelter?
The animal shelter, um, just real quick, I've contacted, um, I've contacted Gary Elder to see how we can move forward with the land. I've also liked to, maybe while I got a, if I'm getting an attorney involved in that situation, I may get them, that same person to look at. I got to, I got to, I got to make sure we have everything properly, when we took that annexed building in Crew. So I got really two, two pieces of property that, that, that we're dealing with. The other thing with that, I just, and, and it's not do with the animal shelter, but that property in Crew. I'm going to try to tie that project with the project of the two houses. In other words, if we, we didn't do an RFP to try to get, to put out a RFP to get a real estate agent, okay? And so, why not get the real estate agent, look at the two houses and the property and the crew? I, I really feel like we need to see what we can do with that property and see what's interesting. Some of the staff in, in the office, they're going to reach out to a developer as well that they know and just see if, if that building can be salvaged, you know, and salvaged and used for something, you know, so.
Greg, did you get a chance to look to see what the zoning was on that Crew building that we received from the school? I imagine it's still public.
It's back right beside Lubbock, right? Right beside Lubbock.
It's all part of that, I was, we got the town manager, the town manager, mayor here, he probably don't know off the top of his head, does he? No, I don't either.
Does Crew have, as far as zoning goes, do they have like a high-density residential where you could put a couple of apartments?
I have to look at, look at, um, we do have areas where we can put more, where we can put apartments.
Greg, if you know the address, you can look it up on there.
Well, that's, well, we're going to, we're going, well, the county's not going to try to take on any expense in regards to this building, other than a, an agent can sell it. So we'd like to look at some zoning to make it as valuable as it could be for a new person to come in and help Crew. You know, with your needs, you know, do you need some more housing? Do you need, you know, commercial space, what, what would help you?
We're certainly willing to work with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Greg, can you talk with Phil a little bit and just see what's good ideas, because then we'll market it and try to sell it.
All right, I'm moving. All right, public safety, Mr. Bowen.
Well, we, we were going to talk about the county, the county radio system.
Wait a minute, did I go to?
That's what we were going to talk about, no, you, you've done, I didn't realize we were going to go.
Under Buddy.
And then, and then I was just going to let you know, the antenna's been fixed and Buddy has already mentioned that, so nothing else on public safety. The main thing was that antenna fixed, you know, at present.
All right, the building official appointment.
Okay, oh, I can get this out, we will. So, and I wanted, I sent, I sent everyone a, a resolution. I'd apologize to Ms. Norton, I told Ms. Norton that the, and, and Mr. Bowles corrected me on that, I don't know why I said Virginia Department of Health. It's the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development oversees our building code academy and gives the certification. This is a requirement, this should have been already done, that resolution, and I don't know if we need to read it, Mr. Rourke, the chairman of Rourke, if he want to. But basically this is making sure that we understand and we did fix some verbiage and I appreciate Ms. Norton's input. And that's been corrected on the, on the, on the second bullet of the way I asked, but what we have to have. He, if you appoint, he, he still works for the county administrator. But basically this resolution shows that you got confidence in Mr. Bowles as our building official. He is, he is working with certification, I think it's multiple tests. He passed one and then I think he was on the second one, looked like he was getting tired and was running into things and, and I think he had to go home and he still had a lot of information. Oh, you got the second one, so he passed two, so what, you got one more? One more, so.
All right, great.
Good job, Nick.
He's two-thirds, so I would like the board to give me the authority to sign that resolution, it's pretty self.
I'll make a motion for Chairman Bowman to.
And, and the chairman too, please.
Or county administrator and Chairman Rourke to sign the resolution on behalf of building official Nick Bowles.
I will second.
All right, just for discussion. Regardless of who the chairman is, I, I, I just want to have this quick discussion since this has come up. All right, it was in the paper, people saw it, vomited when he read it. And it was, it was, it was not the newspaper reported, someone sent the letter in. So, when the chairman signs a document, he's doing it with the permission of the board.
That's what you're acting, you're acting on behalf of the board.
That's right.
Not on my own.
Correct.
So even.
But you two are part of the board.
That's correct.
Yes.
So I wanted to clarify that because, because it's a good time, I think, to mention that. If Ms. Norton was the chairman, and even if she was to say hypothetically was to vote against this and the board passed it, she got to sign it.
She's still signed.
She got to sign it.
If she, if she didn't do it, then the vice chair could sign and still be fine.
It's like the CEO of a company signs a letter on behalf of the company.
So, it's just a signature required by the board in the way procedures move on.
Thank you for clarifying.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank y'all. Congratulations, Ms. Bowles. All right, Mr. Collins, the blight ordinance.
John and I don't have enough to do, so we've been doing two other things. So, in Notaway County, there's blighted things. And when you ride around on our secondary roads, you'll come across a house with the roof off of it or a door kicked in. Primarily structures out in the county is what we're, we're looking at. And the code of Virginia allows us to identify those derelict structures and give notice to the owner. And what's going on is, is you have people that don't take care of their structures. The other citizens of the county that do take care of their structures end up subsidizing it because the value on those blighted derelict structures goes down. And somebody else is taking care of their property and their, their price goes up, so they're paying more taxes and the person that's not taking care is paying less. So that's, you know, it's not fair. So the code of Virginia allows us to notify the property owner that their property is derelict, abandoned, power's off, six months, there's, there's code language. We can increase their real estate tax 10% until that is abated, meaning it's renovated so that it can be used again, or it's demolished. Then the lot can be sold, you're not having subdivision requests because you can take a, a couple acre lot and put a new house on it. So that was pretty interesting, that was from a citizen John, John and I met with on Tuesday. I learned a lot doing this job, so it's pretty, pretty interesting. So that's important, if we can increase tax on something that is, is going down, and then we can give it back to them if, if they comply, you can abate it. If they go in there in 90 days and fix and do what they need to do to get that house back so it's in livable condition, you can say thank you and give them that tax back.
And there's, there's, there's other ways that, at that blight, extend that blight ordinance, it's like nuisance. While I'm thinking about it, sheriff, is there a way that we could get from last year's, let's say the top 20 repeat for service addresses that y'all had to go to?
Part, that's address.
Just the address, we, we're not looking for names, we're just looking for that data, the top 20. And, because we.
And that's called, that's called criminal blight.
Yep, criminal blight, nuisance blight.
And that's a.
Can we, we can increase that taxes as well?
Yes.
At 10%?
Five percent.
Five percent.
And so this is a, this is an owner of a property that allows endangering of the public's health, self, safety and welfare. It's more difficult to enforce, but if we can get the information from the sheriff, we can send that notice to that owner, it doesn't matter who the tenant is, if it's a rental house. It's that owner, it's the owner's responsibility to make sure that there are persons that are in that owner's house.
Wait a minute, I'm glad that the Commonwealth attorney is here because I might have a question for her now.
Is she going to tell you she cannot advise?
You saying that it's the landlord's responsibility? So if somebody is selling, doing illegal activity, which is what we're talking about, the top 20.
Which is in your lease.
Which is in the top 20, yeah, but what about it?
To not let them do that.
Yeah, how do you stop them? They was charged and done their time and came out.
Well, then there's no more calls if they stop.
There's no calls to that address.
But what about if it was, it was in the top 20 calls in a year? And suppose, if it went to the landlord, suppose that tenant is now at Piedmont Regional Jail, he ain't even in there, am I going to have to pay more tax?
All of that would be considered.
All of it, it can all be abated and given back to you when they stop coming to the house. When the sheriff doesn't have to come to the house anymore, when they don't have to come.
I'm glad that didn't happen during the COVID because I couldn't get nobody kicked out.
When they, when they don't have to come there and give them Narcan anymore.
Well, you don't have to worry about showing up at the state, there's a Dr. Pepper.
I don't think I have any houses of any trouble, as some people may have.
So, Sheriff Jones, can you tag this in your system or maybe Michelle can tell us, maybe somehow in your system, can you tag that that house has been called before so we can kind of track it, get a report?
No, just the top 20.
Just return to service.
No. Public's, public's health, safety and welfare.
Public health, safety, welfare, she said Narcan's going to be medical.
Well, that's health, public's health.
But that's, but that's not going to reflect from the sheriff's report to you?
That's going to be EMS.
Right, so you want the EMS to do the same?
So this was, like I said, this is something to learn thing, here we go, Bo. Trying to learn something.
Disassociate your personal self.
And we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get.
We'll get to it, but anyway, this is just an update. The other one that, that John and I were working on, we, we were looking at animal control. And we really run under the state code, so we are going to look at our, our job descriptions to make sure that our officers understand what, what their position is responsible for. And then, we did look at some fees from adjacent counties and we're low and we're going to get this new shelter. So we do need to look at recouping some costs from some irresponsible owners in a couple of our adjoining counties. Ladder, the fee when your dog is at the shelter. So if they catch my dog Monday and I go pick it up and it costs me $30, next time, next week when my dog's there because I'm not taking care of my dog, then it's double, $60. And then they do it again, then it's going to be.
I like that too, however, they might not love their dog that much. So when they would take that dog off our hands, now they won't take it.
They don't, they don't take the dog, they're not taking care of it, that dog can then be given to somebody that cares.
At no cost, or adoption fee, whatever.
You take a dog from somebody that doesn't care.
And give it to somebody that.
Somebody that cares.
That's right.
They won't pay a fee for it, then that's fine, but I liked that idea that you're, you're looking at somebody that's not treating the animal.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, they're not taking care of, I mean, they're letting them run free.
It's an accountability tool.
Yeah.
Absolutely accountability, all right, we're going on to new business then, so Ms. Norton, you have an appointment, is that correct?
Yes, sir, District 3 Library Board Appointment. District three library board appointment. Received a call from Jackie today. We have extended the invitation to Mrs. Jackie Green August to fill that position. She visited a meeting and she gave us a positive yes that she would like to serve on that board. So we congratulate and thank Ms. August for her participation.
All right, so Ms. Norton, are you putting that in the form of a motion to appoint Ms. Jackie Green August?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'm second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you for that, Ms. Norton. Also, Ms. Norton and Mr. Bowman, the business license fee increase.
Want me to start with that?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on the finance committee in an effort to garner more revenue for the county in a less invasive way to all the citizens. Talked with Christie about raising our business license fees and she'll come forward. She left, she, she has spent a lot of time and effort on garnering this information for us. I'm not going to read it all for you. But we based it on reviews of surrounding counties. And to our knowledge, Nottaway County has never raised their business license fee. Currently it's $10. We plan with the board's approval to move that to $30. And there it each, and Christie helped me with this, there are separate categories with different rates.
Correct.
Those rates will increase minimal in each category.
That is correct. And that's all broke down in your packet.
And it would allow us to garner around, like without factoring in new businesses coming in, around 160 some thousand.
As of, if we had the new rates in place for this year, as of March the 11th of this year, we would have brought in 163,757 dollars more.
And as we seek debt set off resolutions, we talked about it and this is one of the less minimal evasions to our taxpayers. It didn't target impersonal property and real estate. It's never been done and all of our surrounding counties do charge some, some of them more than this. So I bring it to the board for your approval if we could possibly raise these rates. I put it in the form of a motion based on the information Christie's provided us to approve the business license fee and rate increase as presented effective on, for the July 1, 2024, new budget year.
I do have one change. I've talked to Bo about it and Steve today for massage parlors. We're charging a thousand dollars now and that's in our ordinance also. I think that's really high.
That's excessive.
Way too.
It's way high. We have one in Blackstone and I just sent them a letter telling them that they would have to pay a thousand dollars. Well, if they paid me that thousand dollars, they wouldn't be able to operate.
So if we amend that then and perhaps change that.
Let me ask a question too. I know we've got folks in the county that do it at their home.
They do.
And so how would they fall into this category?
They should have a business license, but they don't.
Right, I got you.
All right, and Ms. Hudson, since we don't know the exact amount, and board members, we need to go to a public hearing with this.
Okay.
Since we don't know the exact amount of what?
How it's going to change your budget.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Effective how much it's going to change. So Ms. Norton, if you wanted to.
So amend that motion to.
You withdraw your.
Withdraw that motion and that we ask, we place this for a public hearing. And in that timeframe, we can look at this massage parlor issue.
That's right.
And there was one other one too, wasn't there, Ms. Hudson, we talked about? The massage parlor, what was the other one?
I know there's one in Crewe.
Talked about that one and.
We both wanted to know whether we was going to go cruising that in the county.
We did.
For that cruise, but that one, one of them, I don't think. What was it?
We're not going to worry about that because we don't do those.
Carnival cruise is what we was looking for.
Carnival, carnivals, circuses and speed waves.
I do got a little, John, Bo, we can get into pine on.
There you have it.
Sort of motion.
We had a circus here a number of years ago.
All right, all right, so board members, we got a motion on the floor to go to public hearing for a business license increase with, as long as it's been properly noticed.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
One, one comment.
The other one's a force to tell them, but we already done it, you got it in here.
Yes.
Mr. Collins, go ahead.
That increase is about 20% of your radio payment for one year. The citizens are aware.
And it's not that significant of an increase like I originally thought it was going to be, as we talked about today.
It really isn't.
Even going from five cent on a hundred to 10 cent on a hundred, you would think, well, that's doubling it. It is, but if you're paying $160 or $150, go to $300 or 310. And if you've got a pretty good business, if your business is not doing that good, it's not going to cost you no more money because you didn't get any more revenue. And also this $10 going to 30, that, once you pay that, if you, if you raised up into that higher bracket, you no longer pay the $30. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So you no longer pay that $30. The $30 is more of the minimum deal, up to 16,000 or something, something like that that I saw.
Depending on which category.
Thank you to the finance committee for working on that. That's going to help the citizens get, get what they need, get their raise.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hudson.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Y'all have a good night.
You have a lovely night.
All right, the referendum for one cent tax, sales tax was put on there, but did I hear correct that the governor vetoed that? Is that correct?
The whole thing is back for negotiation now, John.
Yeah.
The budget is no longer at the governor's.
The governor's going to make him rewrite the budget.
All right, so, so let's ask this question then. Whether they rewrite the budget or not, we need, we got a very small window here to get a question over to the judge to get it on the referendum for the ballot so the citizens can vote on it. Do we go ahead, get the question presented to the judge to get approved, to be put, placed on the ballot, to do a one cent sales tax for the money, monies to go over to the school?
The governor individually spoke against doing this. He felt like this town, the state was doing enough for counties in regards to schools. So I'm not sure if you're muddying the waters by.
Well, I think what you're doing is you're putting the cart before the horse. Because what's going to happen is when they go into these budget negotiations, and I've read the, the information about the passing this 1% for the localities. It was bipartisan. I mean, people from both parties were in favor of that.
Right.
You know, and passed it. So they may in these negotiations be able to convince him, hey, look, this is what the people want. And it's one, it's kind of like the lottery. You vote, if you want to pay more, 1%, more on your sales tax to help your schools, okay. You go buy a lottery ticket, that's on you. And you have your vote on this. If the majority of the people in Nottaway County say, yes, we would like to pay 1% more on our sales tax and that money go to school construction and so on.
What is the? It's going to go on a referendum, so that, for what election, for the primary?
It'll be this year, this November, but you got to have it in by August. Got to have it approved by August. I can't remember the exact date, but you also got to get the judge to approve the question to go on the ballot.
Well, hopefully we'll get a budget from the state by then. In time to get that thing on the budget. I mean, on the ballot.
I'd say, I'd say hold off right now so the citizens don't get confused because they'll think we're doing it.
Right.
If they see that reporting.
We could revisit May or June when we know we have a budget.
Do unfinished business.
I could bring it back if, if it passes, we could bring it back.
Let's do unfinished business.
So we'll put it back on the June, that will give us two months to get a question to the judge.
And hopefully the state.
That's right, we should have an answer.
Hopefully by then, and that way the citizens will have an accurate.
And I take it, Mr. Chairman, you, the goal was to try to pay for that school security?
Yes.
That's what kind of, that renovation, we had mentioned like $8 million is what you're looking for, okay.
That's right.
And I think we, we need to, if we do come up with that question, we need to partner with the schools so we have the right verbiage in that.
That's right. Yeah, because sometimes the question can be too broad.
Yeah.
So you can put in unfinished business and see.
Yes, and it'll come back in June, okay, good deal. All right, y'all have your consent items in your package? Is there, if there's no questions, I need a motion to approve the consent items to be paid?
Make a motion to approve consent items.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, your correspondence item as well is in your package and we're going to move on ahead to the county administrator's report.
All right, and I'll just make it the quickest possible here. Going back on the correspondence and CRC, that may not be in there, but Northern and Southern Railroad is negotiating now with the Department of Conservation and Rec to see if they can get that last mile on High Bridge Trail to Burkeville. So we sure would like to see that rest of that track come up. That could be a, a good, a great.
Yes.
Plus for the, for the, for Burkeville on that end of the county.
Where does that, where does that come into the town?
It comes in right over that trestle, I call it trestle, the, the bridge, you go on it like you're going through the cemetery. So when you come, when you go onto that bridge, you'll see, you'll see a lot of cuts over, cut, you know, taking it over, that's where it's coming in right there.
So then DCR would then do a gravel lot, a restroom.
I got to see, frankly, first step is get that railroad track up then, and then they'll, they'll come up with a plan. So we're still a ways out, but the, the good thing would be love to see that.
And really.
Golden opportunity of economic development and tourism.
Because you're going to have people coming, stopping there and parking there if they can get a sandwich, get some water, get.
Yeah, and I want to say too, a lot of, a lot of previous, a lot of previous Mayor Marzett, Mayor Welch was here, ex Mayor, ex Mayor Marzett and ex Mayor Welch. A lot of these folks that has gone on, Paul Bennett, who's no longer here with us. All these folks was really been pushing, you know, with legislative to get this done. And some of them just didn't live to see it. So hopefully we can, we can, we can see it. Anyway. April 23rd, I think there's a lunch, Luckstone is, wants to get appreciation lunch for the board and anybody who's, you know, partners with the Luckstone there in Burkeville. Ms. Terry Abston, I know, knew we're doing the budget sessions. She gave you some information, all your information, what the Virginia Cooperative Extension actually do, does. And, and she wants to continue partner with the county as well. The other thing, in the green folder you got there, that's a, that's a survey that came back from Nottaway citizens. The ones who live on the Nottaway Prince Edward Banner line. There's a lot of good reading there, a lot of people who've been there for 35, 60 years that, who really, you know, loves living in Nottaway and, and really doesn't like to see that change. Whether you do anything or not, I think just by sending it out and letting people, you know, people who pay taxes in the county for 60 some years, at least you have let them vent to you and hear their, and, and hear them out. The, I met with, I mentioned about Dr. Grimes and Heather Meyer, I met with them also, not just about the radio system. But we, we will have something very shortly, maybe next month, that they, back in 2023, July, normally they, we give them carryover money. Carryover money means like they got, they got purchase requests that hadn't been done, projects hadn't been completed yet. And it was supposed to be paid in the previous fiscal year. Right now, it looks like the carryover money is something like 2.2 million dollars. We may owe them approximately $900,000. I'm having someone check those numbers. I'm hoping that Heather Meyer is completely wrong, but I, I don't think she is. It's looking like we may be pulling more money out to the general fund. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I wrote down this because I didn't want to get completely whacked out. And I normally don't write things, but I figure I need to. Mr. Chair and the board members, over the past few weeks, our staff, including the finance committee, Ms. Rayford, Ms. Hudson, Ms. Graham even helped. For the last few weeks, our staff and myself have been working very hard on the upcoming FY '25 budget and we continue to do so. This is a learning process for all of us, as many of, of the past budget experts are no longer with Nottaway County. With that, with, with that being said, Mr. Chair and the board members, I just want you, for you all to know, be aware that we are in a very difficult budget year. I don't have enough information yet to be more specific. I feel the picture will become clear over the next week. And at that time, we can talk more about the position we're, we're faced for the FY '25. Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to heed your expectations of stability and civility for the future of Nottaway. And we do need to get in a stability, financial stable situation. So be looking for more meetings, but we, we are facing some, some, some very, very many challenges. But there's no challenges that we can't, we can't meet. I think we can still overcome those challenges.
I concur.
Did you intentionally do that at the end after we voted on the radio system?
Yeah, I held up my back.
I'm glad you did.
I know, I know. It would, it would have been terrible timing, terrible timing. Buddy told me to hold it.
Did you have anything else?
Yes, sir. The last thing is because you can speak to that, but we, we need to go in closed session. I'm hoping to have somebody in 10 minutes and then we'll come back out here, certify and we'll be done tonight.
All right, okay.
But, but notice, watch the clock, we may have to ask for a vote for three hours, I think that's what our rules.
That's correct, after we do the member comment, we would.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something to what Steve just, I mean, that's pretty much of a bombshell to hit, hit the public with after we've voted for this radio communication system. But the finance committee is working diligently and the board knows and we have revenue opportunities. We wouldn't have approved that thinking that we have a disastrous budget ahead of us. It's, it's something we can work with and we've got options. So I don't want everybody out there thinking we've gone crazy voting for $6 million radio system when we don't have any money supposedly, from what he just said. That's not true.
And not on that, to add to that, to add to that, Ms. Norton.
I said I had challenges, no, sir, we didn't have money.
To add to that, Ms. Norton, that, we won't, if it goes as if I read it, we won't have to make any type of payments on that budget of 25 and a half.
Yeah, this won't have nothing to do, that's right.
And I, and I jokingly said that you done that at the end, I was very well aware of that.
We are, but they aren't.
So we got, 2026, when these payments will start and we've already identified several areas that are being addressed this year to, to give us the capital. We need to make that radio payment.
We already done that on, for the very first payment.
But just to give example, we know that, we'll give example, we know like the jail is taking money, okay? We, we understand that. And then you heard that, you know, we're now we're making a 300% where they're taking federal inmates. We're also going to send something to our delegates about the VCBR.
Yes.
But I'm need, I'm waiting for a report for June, up to June 29th, 2024. And then so, so we, what I'm trying to say, all these challenges, there's ways to overcome it.
$200,000.
That's right.
And we got huge expectations for Barfoot with the timber that we've discussed.
Right. Yeah. All right, comments from the board members, Mr. Collins.
I did, this is just a district five comment and I didn't have anything to do with it, but it was just informational. Blackstone's been awarded another $247,000 for additional funds for the renovation, rehabilitation of the Harris Memorial Armory. What they found down there when they started taking that building apart was termites and rotten wood and all kinds of additional problems, things you couldn't see when they got their original quotes. So this is, this is a big deal because this is going to get, get that finished and it's going to be an educational facility. And it's also available to the public for events. So it's going to be, it's a great thing for, for Nottaway and Blackstone.
Good deal, Mr. Ingram.
You know, I agree with Daphne, we're working hard. We've got some ways to get some income that we haven't had before. Hopefully that's going to help us get through this. I agree with Steve, we got challenges in front of us, but working together, I think we can meet those challenges.
Thank you. Ms. Norton?
I just want to note that I had promised the voters when I went out that I would be hosting some town hall meetings. So I'm going to do that quarterly and if they work out, I'll continue, if they don't, I won't. But we'll have a town hall meeting at the Crewe Library, Monday, April 29th, from 6:30 to 8:00, open to the citizens. There'll be some ads coming out. And I wanted to call attention that Crewe Homecoming will be May 18th, since that's my area. And also Burkeville, Dickie, I don't know if you're aware, they're having some big spring fling this Saturday. So our community is alive and engaged and just wanted people to know those things.
All right, Mr. Toak.
I thank everybody, these board members and the citizens in our entire county and my district specifically for their concerns and issues that they brought for us and that we've been able to work on together, like the radio system. And we got a couple of other big issues coming down the pipe and I hope we can, we can work on that together as we did this one.
Okay.
And, and thank you, Administrator Bowen, for, for what you're doing.
Oh, yeah, well, thank you, yeah.
Sometimes that, and you two, Chairman, that the, the public scrutiny can get to you, but you just got to let a few pieces of hair let go and keep on getting up. Ask Bill, not me. You know what I'm saying, it's just, me too, a whole lot. It's expected when you deal with a broad spectrum of people.
Right, but, but to sit up here and try to problem solve and then to have a personal attack.
It, it's not called for, but, but at the same time, if, if he may, the individual may have taken it the wrong, incorrectly way. He thought he was a little bit stick poke. You poke the snake, sometimes he'll bite. poke. You poke the snake, sometimes he'll bite. But having said that, you, we all take things a different way, but if he thought he was going to cut you down by insulting you, your citizens elected you. Not one time, twice. And if they didn't know all them things already, like I did, and I'm not but 43 years old, by the way, I think I'm probably the youngest person on here, except Ms. Norton, then they didn't want born and raised in this county, because I knew about it.
Yeah.
You got elected twice. Steve, you thought you was legally sitting on the board up here?
Paying taxes, paying taxes.
So is all these people in this green book.
So is all them people in the green book. I, that's the only quarrel I had with Steve. I said, Steve, I know where I live. What's your problem? You don't know where you live. But I didn't know that whole deal.
Well, and back, you tell me where we from, back when we were growing up, that, out my address, our mom was a kid. You had to learn it. Right, 1 Box 158. There was no such thing as 1605 Orchard Road.
Man, was right, 3 Box 83.
Right, right. Everybody knows that. That, it was just a whole different world.
That's right.
Right, that's right.
Well, board members, keeping on a, a positive note here, in, in the work that we're doing forward. And by the way, I, I appreciate all y'all's support up here tonight. And of course, I appreciate the citizens' report. I, I never hid anything. It's nothing I'm proud of. So, but.
We can do a three-hour vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got to get.
Yeah. So, but on our next work session for, I believe it's May 14th.
Yes, sir.
We, we're looking at three items. I, I feel like we got, need to be well-versed in. It's going to be the landfill.
Right. I got that. I already called him.
Okay. Then we're going to discuss dispatching.
Okay.
Which, in that discussion would be moving it over to emergency services potentially, and then the light. So that is a two hour, we, we normally do the work sessions, two hours. We'll hold to that two hours. And so the reason why I say if we can get as well-versed as we possibly can, so we can keep that. That's going to be a lot of information, but it's going to be a lot of useful information. So anybody that needs to be invited to that, let's make sure that they're there.
What day was that? Thursday, what?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, what?
Tuesday, 14th, May 14th.
May 14th.
Yeah, May 14th. And that'll, we're doing that here, right? We still, we don't know about the EOC.
Yeah, it was, let's plan it here.
The general district, okay.
Right.
All right. And the board members, it has passed a three-hour minimum, so what we do is we poll the board. We've, I don't know that we've done this before. We may have done it in a closed session at one time, because we were at that point in closed session. So at this point, we, we do have a closed session item. Is there any board member that does not wish to continue? Here and none. Mr. Ingram, you mind reading the motion, please?
Yes, sir. I move that the board convene in closed meeting in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body related to Circuit Case Number CL22-460.
All right. We have a motion. Got to get a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We are now going in closed session. Be back shortly.